All right, I'd like to open up the village council work session meeting August 27, 2020. I show it's 9:08 in the morning. I show we have... Who were you missing?
We're missing Andy.
Andy.
Who have that everybody else?
And Bob.
Bob's here.
Yeah, Bob's not here. Bob's here. I see, I show Bob remote. Do we need an Andy missing and the rest are here?
I'd like to make a motion to allow Councilman Mark Alise to participate remotely.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
We can't vote.
And so the only one missing for the record is Andy this time. So first up, we have an agenda. Do we have any changes, new ones?
Yeah, I got a couple of changes, or one change. So on number 24, it needs to be 6:11:20 instead of 6:16:20.
Okay.
It's just, it's right on the actual minutes in the agenda. It just needs to be changed. And then, can I add 27 to get an update on the website? And 28 to get an update on the land use plan?
27, the website.
Yeah, 28, update on land use. And then, I love, love the fact that you guys think that we can get all of D done in 90 minutes. I'd say let's try to be more realistic with that, like, two hours?
It kept expanding.
Two, two and a half hours?
What do you, what do you say, on what?
The 90 minutes, up, up under D, D. See, the 90 minutes, straight across.
Oh my goodness, yeah.
So, let's, let's try to be more realistic. We know it's gonna go two and a half, three hours, right? So, let's try to do that. And then if we're getting it done quicker, good on us. Let's just try to be more realistic. That was it. That was all the changes.
Bob, do you have anything remotely?
No, what was 27, Kim, again?
Um, update on the website, where we are with the website redo.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
No, thanks, sir.
Jamie? No, I'm good. The only thing I'd like to add is the number 29. And that would be what I'm gonna call WUMA update. W U M A, Western Union County Municipal Association. Just wanna give you guys an update.
I like that.
WUMA?
WUMA. I went to a WUMA meeting, so...
You didn't come up with that, did you?
I did not.
Yep.
Any other additions? All right, I'd like to make the, your motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So move.
All's in favor.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up, we have presentations. Do we have something here?
Mic's on, mic's on the computer.
Mic is on the computer.
Mic is on the computer.
So we have presentations of street resurfacing plan 2023 to 2033. We have Mike Walden. Mike, do we have you online?
Yeah, I'm here. Phil and Mike's was here also. Can you hear me?
Yeah, hey, Philip.
Hey, Phil, how are you?
What's everybody doing, what's going on today? I guess we sit off some glass, not, not on the hurricane lights, some folks are. So we'll just enjoy our sunshine.
There we go.
But, we propose plans for Village of Marvin, our program preservation and our drug preservation plan. Yeah, these plans give us sort of a high level of our asset condition and gives us a good starting point for developing up ahead of course forward. You know, as far as program preparation, about number doctors you speak on program, she goes five or six in our English.
Hey, hold on one...
Hey, Philip?
Philip?
We're getting like every third word you're saying.
Yeah, I don't know if it's your, your microphone or what, but it is interrupted quite a bit and we're, we're not getting a clear sound from you.
Okay, um, I'm using my speaker, my phone. I, I call in if we think that'll work better.
Yeah, that, that's usually been just clear.
Yeah, so we put you, do you wanna call?
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna call me or do you wanna use the WebEx call-in?
Uh, I mean, try the web.
Okay.
Yeah, I was like, I can't, I'm, I'm...
Well, we're hitting like a feedback or a bouncing around of sound and I don't know if it's on your end or on our computer end, so... Bob, how are you?
He walked away. He's not even there. He's getting a snack.
Wouldn't you?
Yeah, pretty sure I did a couple times.
Yeah, no big deal.
Okay.
I'm here for you.
Did you hear what we signed you up for?
On the dog.
Oh, no, no, we didn't, I'm just signing up for anything.
I got you signed up already.
No, you're just signing the house and I can hear if I'm getting signed up to something.
Okay, can you hear me being phoned?
Now we got an echo.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yeah, let me fix that.
Yeah, there's an echo there. Hold on a second.
Holy cow.
What the heck is that?
Okay, I cut the video out of the...
There you go.
...teeter feed off. I'm just, I'll call now.
Yeah, that's, that's, yeah, that is much better.
Okay, but on your end, it's worse on mine. Okay, um, so we wanna talk about your preservation plan, like, since taxes through 2029. These places give us like a, the surveys we did give us like a high level picture of our asset condition. It gives us a starting point to be able to develop these plans. As far as the roadway preservation, about every dollar, you know, preservation, you're gonna pay five or six dollars destruction cost directly. So it's not only the good, good things out of preservation plan. You get to work in a more of a proactive approach versus a reactive approach, with your whole goal being to extend your free lives and make your dollars pay back. So you can see there, the, what the drainage structures, preservation, you, current, for wheelchair routes, gas basins, open zone from cover, pipe. So going on to the, the second screen, uh, second page, it's just screenshot of the curb and gutter inventory. It lists all the assets up at the top and it calculates costs of correcting all the defeats. It'll toggle vertically and hard left. I'm not sure if any of y'all have seen that spreadsheet or not, but that's sort of what it looks like.
Philip?
Yeah?
This is Christina. Philip or Mike, can you just go with a little bit of detail about how that was derived? And so that, can it tell us that you did not camera any of the bites, without visual?
Right. Yeah, Mike's gonna talk about the, the next year there, how they come up with it, what's, what's included with it.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, we're basically, uh, when the village first, we do a drainage structure assessment and inventory, it was basically the kind of everything that, that the village had out there that was gonna be subject to, um, maintain. And to get the condition out of, as it exists, uh, we wanted to get. And basically, we labeled all the, all the inventory, we labeled what percentage that inventory is slated. And the cost to repair those failures is an average statewide cost. So we calculated those and they're calculated out from each map. And then if you go to the bottom, it's calculated for each line item that would be out there to, to be repaired. Of course, each, it's two foot valley curve has got a, it's got a, up to the right, it's got what it costs on that map. If you get to the bottom, it's got, well, all maps, that's got two foot, uh, two foot curb and gutter failing is, that's the total of what it's gonna cost. Go all the way to the right at the bottom, you do a grand total for, um, everything in more. What we've done is break out, it's more than maintain roads. And, um, and that's where we're, that's where we're on this year. If you go to the next slide right here, that will show you, that will show you what we plan to do. We're gonna do all the roads that's marvelous inside of Marvin. We're not, we're not in the state right because as we, as we add this, we will have like repairs made by DOT prior to adding them to the system. And, uh, what we have, Christina had a talk about how it was making all these repairs, starting this year, potentially not by July next year. So that would put, um, that would put all your repairs up to date on Marvin's. Curb and gutter, gas basing, plant rate, pot covers, anything that's not in structure that we got out there. Everything that we brought up, standards, and, um, and a good check, or good condition plan.
Right, real fast, I just wanna make sure they understand this is everything that you can only see. So we're not going to, we, we don't have an index of any failures that are underground or stuff that we, we aren't gonna be able to see. We've had a lot of repairs over the last several months that were unforeseen conditions. And, um, I just wanna make sure that they understand that those problems likely still arise because it's stuff that we have not been able to visually see in this inspection.
Exactly. Yeah, we did, we did a known search of investigation. So everything we did was visual from the top, with cameras, we didn't count anything. And that goes back to like looking to chase the sinkhole out there. Actually came from, um, someone hiding into the, with the drainage cover. And it failed and it didn't work at the road number, under the roadway and the, or the sidewalk. We had to repair, we had to note on same length at, um, Marvin Creek. But now it's actually just a pot that's flooded, that's not even on the, at the plant. So I'm not sure who put that pot in or where it came from, but it's been flooded out. And so stuff like that's gonna arise, um, and that's, that's part of the thing. You can't, you can't find every, every, every possibility of anything that's out there. I mean, it's just, um, best, best thing is when it's being installed, being constructed, is make sure you take the remains you can to make sure it's as fresh as possible.
Uh, you ready to move to slide four, Mike?
Oh, yeah, I think that'll have new questions.
All right, uh, so on slide four, uh, this gives the payment condition survey percentages of good at the fairing for. It shows where the village was in 2016 after the survey was done compared to 2019. At a course, between those two years, we did a couple of contracts. Uh, that totaled a little over twelve and a half miles of research. 2019 numbers with 85.11% in the good is, um, is really excellent stories. Gives you a lot of flexibility with what you can do with your program.
I, I have a question, uh, Mayor Foligno, that, uh, when you say repairs and then you also use the term resurfacing, are those pretty much one in the same for you guys? Or are we, um, because I, I see like quite a significant jump from 2016 to 2019 across the board, but we're looking at only, you said 12 miles of repairs or resurfacing?
That was resurfacing. Does that include like your, uh, wet and shady, hook brook, canterfield, firethorn, beechwood, prominent estate? I probably missed something there, but all those roads, um, you know, account for the 12, for about a half mile. And that was resurfacing.
Good?
Yeah, well, I guess in some cases that it just takes us a repair to get that up to, you know, I, I guess, we, before we take these roads over, are we getting, it all depends on the condition, I assume. Are we just getting repairs or are we getting resurfaced before we take them over?
So far, it's been resurfaced.
Yeah, yeah, in the past, we've just been working with DOT, trying to get them to, I think when Red relief sunned the roads on their program based on the conditions, they've been willing to give the village those dollars to, to put in, put in the contract. And since certain roads, the village might have paid a small percentage to the state to pay those percentage.
Good?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we're good, Phil?
All right, so on slide five, you know, that just gives the, the, uh, the payment condition survey practically, um, marked on the map each other where you can just visually see the different conditions and where they are. It's really helpful, especially if you have a larger system trying to, trying to put a, a plan in place for improvement. Slide two, this is sort of a globe of, uh, I think this is Providence Glen. And it just shows like your, your mangrove and your local collector road is typically gonna be in a little worse condition than your other routes. And we try to, um, we try to avoid a significant amount of loading on these collector roads if we're gonna resurface roads off of that collector road later years. So we try to take that into account when we develop a program. Cause your current loading is, is gonna be, um, it's gonna be a bad thing for your, your current loading, you're gonna turn your road up a lot faster.
Some weirdness with the TV brightness, but this is what, this is what the slide looks like. It's kinda weird.
Turn back.
You changed.
Sorry. Lot of cheese. How far did I go?
Uh, slide seven, I think my...
That's what the slide looks like.
Oh, I was like, what is happening up there? Okay.
Okay.
I'm gonna look at the TV settings.
Are we gonna get a copy of this?
Um...
We can do that.
Yeah, we can, we can raise that. We have the presentation.
Yeah, that'd be helpful.
Wait, that just gets...
Yeah, I, I, why don't I just print out?
Can you print me an extra copy for the record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Can you get to slide seven?
Is that it?
Yeah, but it, it should have been one side, curves and pavement, that's easier now, you know, but going back, but you, a bit later, um, sometimes smaller dollars can, can make a big difference. If you look at the preventative maintenance, which is, um, perhaps hill and your fogged building, it's basically anything to keep water out of the roadway, out of the subgrade, out from under the pavement. That's where you, um, that's where you start getting savings. Yeah, I mean, just look, if you can see, um, the cost for preventative maintenance reservation. And the next one in fair condition is your resurfacing. And then if you go, oh, that's your, that's your building fill and it's a patent. And then failing is a, is a reckless purchase to go in there at the end and start over. So you can pretty much see, um, what you're talking about there as far as when to address a road. And if you look at the preventative maintenance, you start up with the maintenance. One of the roads is still in 85 to 90% top category. And what that does is it, if you can go in there and do a fog still and seal that road to keep the water from penetrating, it's gonna have, we use the, the cell that we use. It's, it's out forward to seven year life depending on, um, the ADT and the tight track. So if you go in there four year, we're on a 22 year program. So if we split and give it down a four year, something called spur road, you know, you can, you can keep these, these roads in a high state of maintenance with minimal money. What happens is when you, when you get in trouble is when you start leaving them open or watering tunnel, foot grade. Then you've got failures that's, that's gonna run your cost way up. So you have to, you have to step ahead of the curve. And I think that's where you were going with the, um, the, the slide we had done a lot with a little to get the percentages up. But if you go to the next slide right here, this is the, uh, this is the permanent condition and that's what we did in 2018. And this, uh, pretty much shows this all of the references. For my, my, I hadn't studied my time, the condition, the remedying. And for those that were here last year, you remember we broke out some variables to get other, other measurements to look at as far as the candidates are putting, we're doing the program. And, um, this is something that most everybody does on a route chain. I think with Christina had told me that, uh, DOT does it every four years. I don't think y'all would have to do it that often. But if you start talking about doing an assessment, uh, every six, seven years, I think that's too far out. So that's something, um, Christina and y'all just talked over.
So you guys recommend how many years then? Like, you're doing the preventative maintenance on a, say, an average to good road. You're recommending preventative maintenance how often?
Well, if you go to the next slide right here, and this is, um, this is what we actually had planned for last year. And, um, I said, yeah, as y'all know, DOT is, um, it's pretty much out of business right now for them. They get their budget in line. And, uh, Philip can probably talk a little to the, the state part of this than I can.
Yeah, the, the D and D, of course, I'm sure everybody is aware of the budget one. I think that the funding they received this year for resurfacing was probably about 40% or so compared to what they would normally receive. And so it's, it's really amazing when you start getting, you know, some resurfacing cycle, how quickly your own system can get back off. So DOT is not gonna be excited about funding a lot of such things for roads. And they've got primaries that's on their heart. So it's probably gonna be a few years before, uh, they may look favorably on, sort of what we've been doing in the past, getting this to participate, taking over, and the village taking over some of these stuffy roads. But the only thing to come back, funding always things to come back. So, you know, we'll just take it year by year and, and keep working to, to get that participation.
Can I just speak real quick to Mayor Foligno's point that he was inquiring about how often we should do preventative maintenance? And I think, Mike, you were talking about in terms of how often we should do the assessment. So those are two different things. I think our road resurfacing acceptance policy that we just approved, being the last year, gave us a, um, I think we put in there that it should be done every seven years, if I'm not mistaken. But Mike, you're, you're recommending that it should be done how often?
Um, like I said, DOT does it every two years. I don't think they'll need to do it that often. But I would think, um, at four years, if you don't feel that we're, we're getting behind. You got seven years out, you're, you're almost at the end of your program that we do every year. And so it gets hard to, it's like they don't, on, on, damage to the curve in between those years. But it is better if you can do it, um, I'd say for four years. What's your thoughts, Phil?
Yeah, I mean, most things you read is gonna say three, five years rely.
Acceptance policy, that was four.
So that's three to four, you know, three, four year range, you need to, uh, you know, you start, you're gonna get more benefits, but still ain't when the road is done. Because the fog still cannot see so much, you know, it's gonna seal, seal those pollen tracks and keep the water out. Uh, if you let the road get too far down that, uh, down that curve, there's just gonna be more deficiencies there that a policy can take care of.
I, I guess my question and concern is if we did some sort of matrix or the math on this, if you're looking to always, and I get, I get your point, it's kinda like a vehicle. You wanna keep preventative maintenance on it. But if you're asking us to do preventative maintenance every four to five years, ID, or less, given that DOT does it every two years, and we take that and you look at, well, how many square feet is in a, a mile of roads? And, and just do simple math and, and are the numbers, do the numbers work? Does that make sense? Mike, am I...
Mike, if I'm not mistaken, after these next two resi, resurfacing cycles, isn't the majority of the plants gonna have maintenance, any of it set up? And then we would redo another assessment in the next five years and, sorry, talk about the, um, resurfacing at that time?
It is, we, we will, we're getting there, that's towards the end of this presentation, is, um, we'll go over what were the, what were the, what were the same roads. And, uh, it'll explain the treatments that we are looking to do and, um, the recommendation of those.
So, so basically, we're kind of already getting there, Mayor Foligno. We, we've already got the next two year or two cycles of resurfacing there, um, that are not preventative. And then from, from that moment out, most of what we had in that recommendation was preventative.
Okay.
Actually, the cycles of, uh, the cycles of preventative offered from Marvin I read. The, uh, the resurfacing is what we have scheduled with the state maintained roads for this year. And if you go to the next slide right here, basically, this is the new one for the DOT roads. Basically, everything that was in 21 is, is pushed out to 25. So what we're getting prepared is hopefully participate in this for at least three years. So if that's, if the fact that they come back in two years, we can adjust this. So this is more of this. And, um, so that's why I put it out there like this, to show that it might be 24, 25. It shows that it might be twenty-four, twenty-five where we actually get this, its DOT dollars back, this back in this facility on their roads.
But, but Mike, in this, in this interim, that doesn't mean we're not doing anything. We're, we're, we're planning to do some preventative in the next, you know, between now and twenty-twenty-five.
Right. If you'll go, um, that, well, not on the state maintained, but because.
We're not, yeah.
And business money, uh, we don't, um, if you go to the next slide right here. Okay, this shows the, um, the roadmap plan that we have for more of them. And it's showing the same thing, basically, what we're gonna add in with the state. So that has kind of went up there. Um, those roads are, 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 they're on, on freight all. So until we get back in, in the good branch of the DOT with some, some of their fund that we're pulling back from the land, if you're going to the next slide right here. Uh, have a bit.
Yeah. Did it not go?
If you go to the next slide.
This one?
Uh, no, it should be.
Not yet, yeah.
Before, there you go.
We can see it.
This, this is it. Okay, this is, um, this is the problem I worked in on from last year. Uh, man, it wasn't a concrete curve again or repair without. I learned, uh, this, this program will actually start in July of next year. And if you look, this is showing what you would get to do there. This is your preventative maintenance. Uh, this is pres- preservation after storage levels. It's the most proactive thing to do. So if you look at the blue, uh, that'll be starting in July next year. Uh, the green will be two years out from about that.
So wait, hold on. Mike, Mike, is it gonna be?
Go ahead.
Is it gonna be July of twenty-two or twenty-three?
Be July of twenty-one, twenty-two, this says twenty-three because we originally had it, had it out there. And then we was gonna, we, we recently had the twenty-one and then we were gonna do these curb repairs and the concrete works that we did out. And we're on an odd year. We always have been. So left it at twenty-three. It will actually, they completed, um, in twenty-two. And then we will go to twenty-five and get feedback on schedule. The, um, and this shows you the, the, the location of the preventative.
Why are we, why are we doing it next year if we're on the every other year and we do them in odd years?
Because we're doing the curb and the gutter work this year.
And this is the fog seal.
I, I understand this is fog seal, but these are, these are neighborhoods that have all been repaved within the past four years.
That's right. And if you look on the, uh, type of conditions to the, that shows you that these are the roads that this is when you need to go in and start doing preventative.
Oh, people are gonna lose their minds. Who haven't got their, who haven't got their roads paved? They're gonna be like, wow.
Yeah, we need to start to prevent it.
Kitterfield Creek just got their roads done four years ago, three years ago. And now they're getting fog sealed on them? People are gonna lose their minds. I, I just, I don't know why we're doing it next year in twenty-two.
What they're saying, you gotta stay ahead of it.
I under, I understand that, but it says twenty-three on here. We do stuff every other year. So then we're not gonna do anything in twenty-two or twenty-three or twenty-four?
The schedule was twenty-one, twenty-three, twenty-five.
Right. So why are we doing it in twenty-two?
Because the schedule was set up for resurfacing and roadway maintenance. We have added the, the curb and gutter, grader structure repairs. So that, that comes under the same budget. So that's why this was pushed out.
So we're doing, we're not doing any of the roads related stuff this year. So in twenty-twenty-one, we're not doing any roads. The work that needs protection here for fog seal will be done and will actually be done in twenty-twenty-two. So we've got, the way that these, you've got the, um, the labels, they get school they condition. But we are doing work in twenty-twenty-two.
Okay, well, if we get back, then we'll look back on the even years. I don't have a problem with that. I was just trying to keep the, the years, um, as odd years, like we will, you know, we have been working with DOT.
Okay, so odd years are resurfacing, even years are curb and gutter and fog seal plan? Is that the easiest way to say it?
I don't know. Right now, you have to Marvin maintained roads that need resurface. And our, our goal is to keep it that way as long as we can. We don't want to spend three or a square foot to go in there. What we could, we could extend a lot, but right now for a dollar, it's a substantial. That's, that's what you're looking for. Um.
So when are we resurfacing next? Uh, you, you guys have got to like make this like cut and dry. Like we are resurfacing when next? That's all I want to know. When are we resurfacing next? We don't know because DOT is not, uh, contributing, so we don't know. So that's on hold until further notice?
We get one.
Okay, so.
There's other topics, other than what from the state's listing.
So I, I understand that. I'm asking, when are we going to start bringing additional roads into Marvin?
Mike, real quick, let me just, let me just mention, I think there's a little bit of confusion because we've had a resurfacing schedule, you know, every year, depending on what DOT has, has done. And we've kind of ceded that off of them to get some of our roads redone. So I think she's trying to figure out when we're starting to back resurfacing to take on additional roads that aren't, aren't already in our system. And the answer to that is we're really at DOT's beck and call whenever they start resurfacing again. So Mike is push that out to twenty-twenty-five just to be safe. Um, even though the DOT is not participating in the next couple of years. So we, we're just gonna assume twenty-twenty-five. And if it takes place before then, then we'll, we'll rearrange this. Does that answer the question?
Yes, but do we not have to continuously bring in roads to continue to, uh, receive Powellville funds?
No, we do not.
Yeah, we don't need to.
I mean, we could stop right now if we wanted to, but that's, that wasn't the intent.
I understand that, but will the Powellville funds not stop?
No, we'll, we'll receive Powellville funding for whatever roads that we currently have in our system.
Okay, so, so right now, currently, we are not worried about any roads that are not in the Village of Marvin right now.
Not until, not until DOT starts to resurface again because we, we can't resurface roads that aren't on ours.
Okay, I got it. That, that would have been helpful at the very beginning of this.
The only roads that we're worried about now that, um, we, we need to preserve are the roads that are within our system, which is what you're looking at right now. Which is the reason that, that Mike is trying to get this preventative maintenance in because these are our roads, as you see on your, your screen.
I got it.
And we want to preserve those as much as we can.
I got it.
And so basically as far as resurfacing, um, yeah, we won't have any resurfacing on Marvin maintained roads until we, until we can run our preventative maintenance until it's necessary. We have to go out there and go fill and fill on this curb and the other sections or couple of, off the shell of the section.
Okay, so do, so do we need to approve this?
No, there's no action. This is, you know, so.
I don't know. I'm asking. Do we need to approve this plan?
We will approve it at the, at one of the next meetings in the, in the regular meeting. We wanted to make sure that everyone was on board with this plan. Um, I, I really obviously don't know any other way to do it. Um, this is what staff and, and our engineers have come up with. So we want to make sure that everyone's in, in agreement with it and that we can start projecting out for the next ten years of how we're gonna do this financially.
Yeah, because this is only what's in the Village of Marvin. We are not worried about anything else right now.
No, but he will get to another slide, I'm sure, in just a second, where he goes over some of the other roads that were in the system that y'all have previously sent, that are DOT roads. And there is a level of cost here that's associated with that. Um, Mike, do you have a slide on that?
Uh, the DOT.
The one where we have, where it has our, like our share and their contribution to those roads?
It's back on, um, slide eight.
So if the, the contribution is not on that screenshot, uh, I know what you're asking for. I'd have to, um, I have to pull it up from the spreadsheet because the screenshot of the spreadsheet doesn't include that part of it.
Exactly. This prior part was, is designed, is to show the, the methods we used to get them where we are. The, the actual spreadsheet, row here and Kristina have those of where you can scroll through every road through the bottom line. And at the bottom of this spreadsheet, it doesn't show if you got your row here.
Yeah, I'll pull it up in a minute. Just a second.
It shows the, uh, prior commitments from DOT.
That we're not worried about.
Says in place, so when they come back, we'll have activated money.
That we are not worried about.
Talk back on resurfacing state maintained roads, but, but they had back to the Marvin system.
Okay, but we're not worried about that till at least twenty-twenty-five. Is that right, Christina?
That's correct.
Okay, well then, I mean, we don't even need to have this conversation.
Well, I, I think from what I take out of all this, the decisions that need to be made is agree that the preventative maintenance needs to be over four years.
Yeah.
That's, that's one.
Yeah.
And that we are, so when it comes time in our next meeting, when we go to approve this, that the, we've already assumed and have agreed upon that four years, four years preventative maintenance schedule. And that, um, whatever is here, he's already, we've already got a plan for twenty-one and twenty-two. And this begins twenty-three and, and beyond. I think.
Yeah, I, I, I'm good. I, I don't need to, I feel like we're going round and round and we're not getting anywhere.
We're, we're beating the dead horse here.
Well, the only reason we really want to do that is to see the, the numbers and how we're projecting out over the next several years. And so we can really, from a staff level, plan from, from, you know, capital side of financially, what we're looking at for the next ten years. We want to make sure that we know what we're doing and that y'all are on the same page so that we can start planning financially.
You can start planning financially. We're good.
Yeah, great job on this. I mean, really, I mean, there's a lot of work that's going into this and, and put into it, but I only saw two, two things really to discuss.
Yeah. I, I mean, I'm good with the plan that, uh, the, the fog seal plan and the curb and gutter stuff, that's, I'm good with all that.
And preventive maintenance that we created.
The fog seals, yeah, preventative, yeah.
Just to keep in mind, um, as far as these roads that are in Marvin, the some state maintains us and, um, I know that a lot of them are in, in need of repair right now. Uh, with DOT's, uh, budget, we're just not doing anything. And actually, you know, wanting to look at trying to, at one time, do, uh, maybe some of theirs and, and, and have an agreement to be reimbursed. But they're not entering any agreements like that either. That's gonna cost them dollars down the road. So right now, the state maintained roads are pretty much the state's.
I, I, my, my opinion, my opinion is we, we control what we can control and, and lose sight of anything that we can't or assume because we can't assume.
I thought you were going right, but you're, you're state roads. You're not getting any funds off of them. You're getting valuable meal reimbursement. So it's just money that you're gonna pay out without getting your money back.
Yeah.
At this stage, we're in.
Well, I think we have consensus unless, Bob, you have any other comments you want to add to it. But then what we're looking at is more, Christina, from your standpoint, a staff direction and, and how to plan out from a financial standpoint.
Yeah, so Mike, I think we're, I think we're okay if you, if you're canceling just put on the fog seal plan at the next consent, at the next meeting, the regular meeting so that we can get that approved and we can plan for that. And then in, you know, twenty-twenty-four comes around, our DOT comes back earlier, you can adjust the, um, the cost share on the program.
Perfect.
And we'll back on the consensus?
Consent agenda, yes.
Yeah, okay.
Perfect.
Good, good deal.
And let's continue the opposition trust putting the fog seal on the consent and just put it on there.
Nope, that's fine.
That's, hey, um, just, I hate to, this, was there, uh, any kind of comment on this, this last slide of traffic calming that maybe we don't understand from it?
We got traffic calming.
We got traffic calming.
Okay, got it.
Is this where that?
We're actually.
Yeah. We'll, we'll show the whole thing.
We actually have this, we actually have this as an agenda item. So Mike, if you don't, I don't get too much in detail with this. Um, just kind of give them a high level and we'll get to that item. It's pretty high up on the agenda, so you'll, you'll still be here when, when it comes up.
Okay, um, yeah, what we did on this is, um, we put it up on the front desk and back.
Nope, I can't hear you.
Yeah, you.
I'm not.
A lot of background noise.
Nope.
Can you hear me?
Is somebody, is somebody not muted and they're like playing with like, I don't know?
Seems like a lot, somebody's unmuted and, uh, getting a lot of background noise.
There we go. Fire away, Mike.
On mine?
Yes, you're good now.
You're good now.
Okay, um, I'm hoping to put this book, open again for, uh, some, for the staff to, to have, uh, some consistency in, in these neighborhoods and their, our west for traffic calming devices. Um, and basically if you look, there's a lot of different ways to do it, but, uh, well, I've incorporated a participation by, well, HOA's. Um, so they've got some, some stake in the game. I mean, I'll study show that the majority of the speakers in the subdivision are residents of the subdivision. Um, so there's some, um, areas where they can do something to enhance, um, so they can, you can, the, the, I don't know, setup to do with neighborhood maintenance, um, they'd be doing that. If, if they submit a proposal, a, a request to have, uh, speed humps, whatever. Now, that request, we've got a form in here that goes to the village. And the village will, will, yeah, and it's submitted to Yawa for, uh, the Yawa's approval to go ahead and look into it to something that you already.
What, I, 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 I guess we can, we could probably sum it up by just basically saying if we are gonna, i- i- it's gonna be kind of how DOT works. If you wanted to, uh, a speed hump in your neighborhood, it's gonna have to go through an approval system through the village once it's owned by the village. Would that be fair to say? Because it, we're, we're having a hard time. You're still breaking up to some extent. And it's, and on, on my end, I don't know about the rest of you, but it's kind of hard to.
So I'll, I'll, I'll speak for Mike here real fast, um.
Can we talk about this? Can we not talk about this, like, when we get to it?
Yeah, I was gonna say, we don't really need to spend a whole lot of time on this. Basically, this is just to show, show you guys that we have developed a policy that's in the agenda packet, um, that helps with requests if people want to have speed humps or stop signs or anything that controls speed that are in their subdivisions. And, and we have this as an agenda item.
Yeah. Okay, so we, we'll, we'll address that just in a few minutes here, but, um, but this was, uh, so, so can we move on then from the, are we done with the resurfacing then, I assume?
Yes.
Okay.
Great. Mike, thank you. Phillip, thank you. We appreciate it. It's a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, so, um, next up we have, uh, C Village Hall. Um, first is updated up from property owners.
Rohit, do you want to speak to that? We're going to have a special meeting-
Yeah, sure.
-tomorrow.
So, we've had a couple of meetings with the property owners that you requested us, you know, the idea to put the, and again, it's a concept that we're proposing, so just to put that out there, it's a concept. The Village Hall behind the Crane Store, and we've spoken to them, and they seem warm to discussing the idea further. So, we're going to be having a special meeting with council and them tomorrow afternoon, 2:30, I believe it is?
Two.
Two.
Two? Okay, sorry, two o'clock. Two o'clock tomorrow, and that's about it.
And we all plan to be there tomorrow in person and/or online?
Nope, I'm out.
You won't be here tomorrow?
I'll be online.
All right, and then Andy is, if he can get back, okay, you're ready. All right, so that's good. And then, a second, we have updated timeline. What was that?
Yeah, Saff is working on updating the timeline. We kind of wanted to know from council as far as roughly what y'all want to see at ground rankings and that we can kind of establish a timeline based on all the things that have to take place between now and then to-
Did it change from the end of the year, January?
Say again?
Did it change from the end of the year, January?
Well, that, that's, that's what I want to make sure, that everyone's still on board with that, and then we'll go through and update the timeline, because it's going to be pretty aggressive if that's the, okay.
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it all, it all depends on how this meeting, I would assume, goes tomorrow, right? Correct? Because I think we're, I think this council, Christina, is ready to move forward, because I think we've exhausted all different parcels, if you will, that would be in play. Is that fair to say? Absolutely. Well, on that note, Tim Fincher saw this and said he's still willing to let the Village Hall be on his property.
Okay.
And you could also consider phasing that if there, if there were to be a village center. That's the farm property at the corner.
As soon as you get this first cycle property right to the line, right out of the hole.
It's got some telegraph there now.
How many acres is that? How many acres is that?
Uh, it's 13.
13 acres, okay.
Yeah. And, and so, because he saw that, he saw this item, he's like, oh, you're planning on putting there. Well, the option is still open if you want to consider his property.
Well, that's good to know.
Um, I don't think that he'll be at the meeting tomorrow, but I can invite him if you want to talk about that as well. The, the agenda was generic in terms of whose property we're talking about, so.
Okay.
I mean, I think what's, I like this idea because there's some historic value there, so I think we exhausted that.
Continually.
Yeah, and then, and then we've got the property at the corner that we kind of work into it, so let's just, let's exhaust this before we move on.
Quite frankly, I don't think there's any reason to change the timeline if this doesn't get some wind beneath it and, you know, so we'll, we'll keep the timeline as is. That's okay with council.
Okay.
All right, all right, next up, we have Items of D, Items of Discussion, Traffic Calming Policy. Didn't we just talk about that?
We're back to it again.
Okay, so Traffic Calming Policy.
Christina, I was reading this, and I think upfront, we, we need to state, like, right upfront, that this is for village-owned streets only, since we can't do anything with DOT streets. Like, I think that needs to be, because I think that it, it's in there, but I think it's like buried like a page or two in.
Because obviously, does this, would this, would this kind of filter its way into something like a road like Joe Carr, which will never be part of Marvin, or I don't think it's planned to be. That's a state road, right?
Yeah.
But, I mean, we just got to have to make clear or differentiate what we, what we can control and what we can't, and there should be some sort of process through the, and I, I would kind of leave it up to the neighborhoods, kind of like what happened with our, if you're having issues, there's a process just like there is with DOT.
Well, that's what, I mean, that's, that's what it says. It's like you've got to have HOA consensus. If you don't have an HOA, you have to have X number of residents that have signed off on it. But I think upfront, because I was like, well, is this for like, you know, my neighborhood, and we can come to you guys and say, hey, we want speed humps? Well, you know, the village doesn't own my neighborhood yet, so we need to make sure that it's upfront, that these are village-owned streets, neighborhoods, subdivisions, um, right upfront. Is anybody going to talk to this, or are we just talking to ourselves?
No, I think we've, I think the amount line did-
I'm fine. I'm, I'm fine with what you're saying, Ken.
Okay. Christina, do you have anything to add?
Christina, you're muted.
If you're talking.
Is that unmuted? Yes.
What is she doing, something?
You may not be sitting here.
The only thing that, the intention and funding that raises a flag for me is-
Well, that was, well, that was my other thing, is who's paying for it? Are we paying for it? Are the neighbors paying for it?
It sounds like the Villas of Marvin is solely responsible for engineering implemented. What about the actual-
Okay.
Putting the hump in?
This is, um-
Or whatever it is. Go ahead.
Sorry, I, I was talking and I was muted the whole time.
Yeah, we didn't hear one word of what you said, and then you guys were kind of on top of each other, so. Go ahead, Christina, you first, and then-
So, real fast, on, on the traffic calming policy, there's some things that we want to change from a staff standpoint, but in a nutshell, this, we will make those changes for, um, the, you know, so people understand it's village streets only. But this was really just for us to be able to have some type of document or some type of policy for when HOAs call in and say, hey, can we get a speed sign, a speed, speed reduction, or can we get a stop sign, or can we get a speed hump? And we don't really have a policy for those things. We don't have any money that's earmarked for those things. So, this is basically a way for us to go through something to show to those homeowners that request these things. So, we have to make some changes from a staff standpoint, just to understand how we're going to do this a little bit better. And so, staff is going to work with Michael cleaning up this just a little bit, but this was just our first step at, you know, seeing this, letting us know how you like it or don't like it, and, you know, we'll make some more changes and we'll have it on another agenda from current consideration.
Okay. Can I, can I just make some comments about some of our calming devices that are in here? I, I don't think a center island narrowing is feasible in any of our neighborhoods. I don't like this chicane thing. I don't like the choker thing. So, really, my options are a speed cushion, a speed hump. I don't think that the roundabout is feasible in a neighborhood. And, yeah, so really, like, speed hump, stop signs, these other things, we're not going to put a, a, a choker or a chicane or a center island narrowing. We're not going to put that stuff in these neighborhoods. These are for like main roads. So, if they're not going to be an option in our neighborhoods, we shouldn't have them in our policy.
That's, that's what I put this out there for, is for you all to look at and decide which options that you do want to allow, and I'll remove the others.
I mean, I like a stop sign, I like a speed hump, I like a speed table, uh, there's something else, a speed cushion.
Would, would, would signs be included in that?
If you look, have you got, pull it up right here?
Um, yeah, I can screen share it, and you can tell me which page to go on.
If you can pull it up.
Uh, yeah, one second, one second. Screen share, screen. No.
Sorry, I mean.
All right, so I've got it, I've got it screen shared.
I mean, why would I do these? Why would I do them? Like, if it's like, you know, Joe Carr or something, then maybe we're going to have it, but not here in the neighborhoods.
Yeah, if you go, if you go to page two, it's the Neighborhood of Marvin's Campaign.
Sorry.
Yep.
Yep. We have papers in front of us, so.
Yeah, this is the option for the HOAs. This is their part of the discussion. If you go to the bullets there, it shows some, some means of them participating in this one. There's a huge volume and the council, I think, will allow them in the neighborhood. If you go on down, the next page right here, it shows the procedures for initiating a neighborhood study. And basically, we've changed this to show that, um, on their request, it gets submitted to y'all to even, for even doing anything to make sure that this is something that will be formed. If you approve that, then we can figure out exactly what their, what their concerns are and the best I can-
Stop signs.
To try to, try to challenge it.
So, yeah.
And a lot of times, if you look at, I think, three, um, type one options will always be the first thing, because it's the least, least invasive and it's the least cost-wise in asking that police presence. Make sure all your signs are in towards the images. We've got a minimum, you know, requirement or better. Each lane is a three right sign, that's your right, or it sheds your speed. And like I said, studies show that both of these speeders are residents of the neighborhood. And then, type two, that's where we would, if it's, if it's warranted, that's where we would move into the type two measure. And I'm, I'm with y'all on the sun list, which is in type one. And on type two, I'm with y'all on the speed cushions and the speed hump. I put the others in there because some, some of us probably use. We can take out what you don't like, leave what you like. The boulder way stop, that's, that's something else you can do, and it's, you kind of want your traffic fairly equal your, the traffic volumes on each lane of intersection. It's feasible. Um, traffic, traffic calming, that's, that's shows what it needs to make. And I don't think that we can, we can change this to suit y'all's needs, what you think it should be, um, within these surroundings. Information evaluation, and finding, I've changed that shit that, um, I haven't submitted yet to the first round, but I will after I get y'all's comments. It will be the, it's part of the HOA for any, any type of common applications that they want, or if that's warranted and approved, they will solely pay for. Um, we will, and hopefully be sure that this is done, that put into standard. The, HOA will follow, just like any other candidate, within the, the village, if they want a speed hump, they're going to do an non-utilities encouragement agreement between the HOA and the, this is to Marvin, that shows, you know, they are want a couple of calls for installation, maintaining, and a lot of times what happens in these neighborhoods, they are, they want something and then they get tired of going over speed humps, and they say, yeah, we don't want this anymore. You know, if they're deemed to be removed, they're, they're going to cover the cost of that as well, because it's, it's their, um, it's their speed hump. It's your street, they've installed it under a encouragement agreement, that's what each, the village covered.
So, could we, so could we take out the things that we really just don't think are going to be feasible, and then you guys can put together with your changes that you, Christina, you indicated, and then let's talk about it at the next work session?
We can, yes.
Okay, so center island narrowing, chicanes, chokers, roundabouts, uh, or traffic circle, I think those, those we need to get rid of. I don't think those are feasible at all. And then, and then add Village of Marvin-owned streets at like the very beginning, and then, Christina, whatever else you guys need to update, change, move around, and then let's put it on the next work session?
Okay, we can do that.
And then, Mike, one more question for you real quick. From a liability standpoint, for, like, once a, a speed hump is put in, are there any, or have you heard of any liability issues with how, you know, whether someone damages a car or whatever? We go forward with this, it's owned by the neighborhood, or is there any liability issues of installing this that you, you're aware of?
No, that, totally encouragement, they assume all the responsibility. If there's a damage to a vehicle, then that claim would go to the HOA and it would be up to them whether they paid it or not.
Okay, is that, is that in here?
The village will be held harmless.
All right, we just want to make sure that our policy is in here too, what they're going for. It's going to be a, I think what we're agreeing to will be a individual, neighborhood by neighborhood decision, that's just the process to come to the village, and then, you know, do they meet that criteria, and the-
But let them work out all the gates first, like, let's, let's do that, and then we'll talk about it again.
All right.
The, the part of that liability that really needs to be, and this because if you want to compare non-utilities and encouragement agreement, I'll let it spill out in that agreement.
Okay.
Perfect, perfect.
Thank you.
Mike, thank you so much.
Thank y'all.
All right.
Thank you, Mike.
Stay safe.
Thank you, sir, you too. All right, next item of discussion, we have number two, discussion of Joe Carr crosswalk share.
So, the last couple of meetings, we've had some discussion with the HOAs in terms of cost sharing for the crosswalks, and I've got a pretty detailed memo in your agenda packets. You guys had told me that you wanted to make sure you got one answer back from all HOAs that were involved, and I've heard back from all except for one about the-
Which one?
Marvin Creek. They, they've been in contact with me, they've had some questions, and, and we've, we've had some emails exchanged. We just, I have not got a yes or no answer from them based on what the other HOAs proposed. They had a meeting amongst themselves, and they came up with this plan that's in your agenda packet, and all have approved except for Marvin Creek. I think they were waiting to hear some information back from their board. The last we had spoke was yesterday via email, and I just haven't, I haven't got a hug nod or a handshake from them yet.
Did, did, did they not come to us and, and express their concern over the safety of this crosswalk, and that they were willing to participate in, in doing something, or am I mistaken?
No, they did. And, and the, they've had a change, Jennifer and her president, they are looking to do some fundraising, and so Jennifer had asked some questions about fundraising, and there's a new president, and I, I don't remember the individuals name off the top of my head right now, but they've been in contact, trying to get some information sharing amongst themselves, themselves, but, um, I can try to update you at the next meeting, but this is kind of where we're at now, is, this was a proposal, but I've got, you know, the one that we still got on.
Okay, and have the other three neighborhoods been updated that Marvin Creek has not gotten back to us?
Yes.
And what have they said?
Um, I think they have all, well, I, I don't know, this is all done via email. They, they may have had some communication amongst themselves, but I know that at least one of them had tried to reach out to Marvin Creek to answer the questions that they had, but I'm not really, they hadn't really said anything to either per se.
Okay. So, we're just in a holding pattern until Marvin Creek decides what they want to do?
That's correct.
Okay.
But I'll update you at the next meeting if I have an update, and if I don't, then we'll just wait until I get one, but I'll keep trying.
I, I honestly, Christina, we have put it out there, I would not ask them again. If, if, if they do not want to contribute, then they don't have to, and they're the ones that came to us asking for us to do something, and that they would be willing to be partners with the village, and if they don't want to do that, then-
Yeah, and, and again, it's not our road, number one, but, and you got to understand, in my view, the opinion of one, we are using- in my view, the opinion of one, we are using all of Marvin's taxpayer dollars to address one essential area, and I think the fair thing to do is, because I think we've kind of done some things to help neighborhoods out, and that's our goal, is play nice in the sandbox here, but...
And the safety of the safety.
The bottom line is, is, you know, it's a, it should be a shared responsibility between all neighborhoods that are involved in this particular situation. Again, whether we have some sort of uh agreement going forward on these type of things, I, but you gotta understand, we're using all of tax, which doesn't affect the east side of Marvin, but is, is affecting these few neighborhoods, and I, I think it's a fair offer to them to...
Oh absolutely, and I, I'd leave it alone Christina, and if uh Wyndham Hall, Bridle Path, and Canterfield come back, you can let them know that Marvin Creek has not responded, therefore, you know, we can't do anything without them contributing, so if they have got questions and they need to contact, um Marvin Creek about it.
Hey Christina, can you, um on the background, the last sentence of the background, could you, could you repeat that sentence? One HOA stated, stated they only have $20,000 and they need a funding for their entire HOA, and this would not...
Oh, I'm sorry, would not, I'm sorry, would not be feasible for them.
Uh understand, which one, which HOA said, said that?
Um it was either Wyndham Hall or...
Bridle Path?
Um Bridle Path, one of those two.
I, I, you know what, I, I guess the assumption, and this is just from me, if you do have a discussion with someone, I love when someone says, we only have so much in our budget. Well, you've got an issue, you've got a problem, you don't sit there and say, I, I don't have any money, well then go raise some money. We're giving, we're giving you funds from other peoples, like Joe said, from other people's taxes, which we could really be a stickler on, then do an assessment. I don't know, but don't say, I hate when people say, I can't. This society is the I can't society for the last, God, don't get me on a rant. I don't wanna hear, if you wanna get a nickel from, from Councilman Lyon, I don't wanna hear someone say, I can't. Cause I, I will tell you that if someone from Bridle Path says, I can't because it's only status quo as at this moment, then I don't wanna have the discussion at all. You want, you want me to put something in, but you wanna go with status quo, with what is currently on the thing right now. So it's to Kim's point, I wouldn't pursue it, I would just let them come back, and when someone says, well, we can't because we only have, we don't have a budget of X, and say, well, you need to go back to your residents and say, you know what, I'll give you time, I'll give you five years to come up with that money, and in five years, we won't put the, that device in until you, you, you're ready for it.
I, I think when you look at the options, I mean, if the road is owned by the state, so their other option is to go to the state and try to get some sort of funding with that, good luck with that. I think we're open to work with them, I think the fair thing to do is, and again, we may get some pushback from other residents that aren't involved in this, but I would like to think that we as a village, as we are taking over the roads, and there are connector roads that are state owned, that we know the state isn't gonna get involved in, that we're willing to do something when we have issues like this. We are absolutely willing, but if they're not, if they're gonna, to Jamie's point, if they're gonna say that, hey, you know, we just don't have it in our budget, and then if that's that and the story ends, then I, I don't know how this, this gets fixed, uh because I, I don't think it's the responsibility of the village to raise those funds for that, because it's all of Marvin's taxpayers.
I would defer back to the state. I would ride that horse, see how far it goes. We wanna be helpful, I, I, Christina, but I, to Kim's point, I wouldn't go back out to them, and I, let's, let's, let's have an adult, real adult conversation when we do.
And, and, and if any of them have a problem with that response, they are more than, I am more than willing to sit down with those HOAs and have this conversation with them face to face.
Yeah, open it up, I mean, we'll, that's...
Maybe we can bring it on the topic of discussion for the open meeting that we're having in September.
Yeah, that's just for your neighborhoods that have X.
But it's gonna be for future neighborhoods if we're having these issues that are connecting one neighborhood to another, and there's a connector road that's state owned.
But, but we've already had a, a fatality there.
Right.
And, and, but you've got someone that goes, what you're, what you're giving us is not, is not enough. We just, what, then what was the answer, what was the alternative? Nothing? That, that the village paid for? Again, I, I guess at that point, you know, there's a split in the road. Go to the state. Take your HOA, take your president, go to the state.
And prices are only going up, so I would imagine that if, if, as you, you know, costs go up on, on these types of things, and, and I think we should address it sooner than later, but I think it's in their court.
Okay.
It's like, it's like...
All right, are we all good there?
I'm kidding.
Got direction on that? Okay.
No direction.
Next, uh we have discussion of road repair ordinance proposal.
Okay, um so this is something Christina may have to help me with the background, but short and sweet is that we don't have an ordinance that makes uh third party damages liable, so uh we'd like to have something along the lines of if uh you caused damage to a road that we own, then we have some teeth to seek, uh you know, you to...
Fix it.
Fix, yeah, or will give us the money to fix it.
Okay, tell me what B is.
Uh, sorry, what's B?
A person may drag, run, or cause to be dragged or run upon any street, public street, any harrow or other implement machine are too likely to injure or cut the surface of any such street.
Yeah, like a harrow is like, if you're dragging something and it causes scratches in the street.
Or a tractor.
Yeah, like a tractor, like or something.
That feels like a really big rod, I'd say that's a whole bunch of stuff that needs to be split up a little bit.
I borrowed that from someone else.
It may be useful to have that one.
Maybe somebody knows what means. Be like, well, no, you can't drive, you can't row.
Just look at me.
They, and, yeah, okay, all right.
Where are you seeing that? I don't know why this is not all the same.
So we'll put this, this, this has to be a print in an ordinance format, so we'll, we'll put this together in a, you know, a more formal process, but we just wanna make sure y'all are okay.
Yeah, no, I, I, a hundred percent, if we're owning these roads and people are messing them up, they need to pay to fix them.
Right, and this is, this, this hasn't...
You're going too fast, you're going too forward.
As far as I know, this hasn't happened, we're just trying to get ahead of it.
No, I think it's great.
I do too.
I think it's smart.
And um the direction that I guess I'm seeking.
You know how much I love a policy.
This would be an ordinance.
Oh, this is an ordinance, all right, well, I love those two.
So this would be an ordinance?
Um it could be on the next agenda, we could just need to talk to it, try to flush it out.
I like it. So it's not, it's not, no, no, it's not an order, so it's, it's like we're looking at road repair.
It's an ordinance.
Well, wait, now, road repair ordinance, and then on this side, this is first, this is what?
That's the, that's the previous page, that's the previous page.
It's the backside.
No, I know that, but roundabout is down, clear, roundabout landscape planning.
You, you, you really need to keep it in a binder, because you don't, you're messing up.
I know, I, I haven't moved any of this.
Yeah, you've messed it up.
I have not, this is exactly how it was.
We can't even right now. Joe, if it's on the, it's on the backside of that page.
No, I understand that, Kim, but it's two different things, you got roundabout, which should be first, right? Look, look, I understand.
No, that goes over here, there.
If you were reading a book, you go from left to right, so this would be page one, this would be page two.
I don't know, it's right in my book.
This is, this is page two, this is page one, you tell me if I'm wrong.
It's waiting to say, you know, you're pointing that on yourself.
Roundabout planning design, then we have here, what we're talking about, road maintenance repair. So that's why road maintenance repair is first, then roundabout.
It's, it's, I've got it right, Joe, it's user error.
I'm, I'm, I'm just, you know, I, I'm trying to simplify, because this is how I got the packet, so I'm like, where, where are we at? So apologize for my, am I...
I think, I think your packet was whole punched backwards.
Okay, thank you, so it's, it's all whole punched properly, but it's whole punched backwards.
Yeah, I think, I think that's...
Okay, okay.
It's user error, Bob.
It's not user error, it's just I'm reading this like a book and it's not all coming together.
You want to read that, and that's the next thing, but it's not...
I'm still back on the drag.
Sure, I know.
This includes forebracing on Marvin Road, does it?
Right, I'll bring you the packet.
That's okay, I just wanted to make sure that I'm not crazy.
Bob, what'd you say?
While he's going through the papers, I was trying to, and I wanna get confused with what you were asking about drag, opposed to drag racing on Marvin Road, we're still allowing that, right?
No, dragging a, dragging a, a...
Something.
Some type of instrument that would cut into the road.
Or person.
No. I, I was teasing, I was talking about, I was, he was fiddling through the papers.
He was trying to make it funny.
My apologies, but I, I did get confirmation from Row Hit for the record that my, my, my whole packet was punched wrong, so pages, it, it's not flowing like the agenda is flowing, so I'm, I'm realizing I'm having to jump ahead to catch up to you guys and...
Anybody believes that?
He's disoriented.
It's sabotage, it's sabotage.
It's sabotage is what it is. Okay. Um, all right, so where are we at, where did we end on this then?
Uh next up is the fire throwing road acceptance and manhole drainage issues.
Okay, so we have, next up is discussion of road, uh I'm sorry, discussion of fire throwing road acceptance and manhole drains issues. I saw, I saw we had pictures on that, so...
Yeah, we don't have anything in our packet, just the pictures.
Yeah, I, I've got some printed out, is it Mike, are you still gone?
No, he's gone.
Okay, um yeah, he was needed for this item. Um so we've got the issue resolved, Mayor Plino with the um, the drainage issue, DOT is paying for that.
The drainage, the corner and bear one.
And he's still, he's still working with DOT to get them to look at these manhole covers. Um they are outside of the specs of what we allowed for this contract, but the contract's already been closed out, that's not really our problem, um but, so Mike is still working with DOT right now to try to get these manhole covers fixed, it's, it's kind of the gist of it.
But they did agree that there is an issue.
No, we, we...
No, they have not.
We have agreed that there is an issue, they have not.
They don't think that's an issue?
Uh-uh.
We just heard a, someone yesterday tell us that...
I know.
That they feel like they're running over a small body or something.
Are they just like raised up?
No, they're, they're sunk, they're not even, so when you go over them...
And that's what these pictures are showing.
It's hard, I mean, it's significant on your car.
Yeah.
Even at twenty, twenty-five miles an hour, if you happen to, you have to straddle it to avoid, you know...
It's essentially a pothole.
And there's, I, I think I went around our neighborhood and there was at least four or five of them, I believe, that I identified, and I think I wrote it out at some point, but that's for inspection to go around.
All right, so Mike's still working on that Christina?
Yeah, that's really all the update was.
Okay.
Okay, next up, we have a discussion roundabout landscaping plan.
Derek, I was wondering why you were hanging out.
Yep, you guys should have um a rendering...
See, I gotta go backwards now.
...that I brought for, in your packet. Um this is just a suggested design, um based on one that I found that...
I like it.
I thought was very clean and simple, um...
Loaded the ground?
Loaded the ground.
Not much sign is pollution?
Mike said that we could um definitely lower the, the current roundabout, still maintain some crown in it, um...
Yeah, 'cause I don't like how like humps, like it's like, can we like flat, like...
Yeah, I don't either.
It's kinda like a muffin, you just wanna cut the top off.
Yeah, I think we um look at what the best practice is for, you know, safety standards, um for sightlines and whatnot, but um, but overall, I think we bring it down a little bit.
So we weren't involved in the construction, if we were to lower it, do we even know what kind of fill is in there, or is it just...
It's junk.
I guess, yeah, I'm pretty sure.
Okay, so could, it could be, if we, it may not be just cutting the top of the muffin off if you want.
Well, then they have to fill it up.
We may have to bring in solid dirt that is gonna be able to grow things, because we, we have no idea what they've basically replaced that with.
So the first one is the one at Marvin School Road that we're gonna work on?
Yep.
Okay, and we're...
So what I'm, what I'm asking from you guys is just a general consensus on, or approval of the design, just that basic design, um not specifics on plants or, you know, materials, uh I'm just looking, you guys like this design, and then some of the discussion in PRG kinda went back and forth about, oh, do we do annuals, do we do river rocks, you know, I, I don't wanna get into that, but just for your knowledge, I just had a rough estimate drawn up by the landscaper we use here to maintain town hall, who's done projects at the park, and just for those plantings that I suggested, um is less than nine grand, so, and that's grass and everything. So that leaves us $6,000.
For fill, dirt, etc.
For all the extra, yeah.
Okay, good, that's great.
And then have you projected a maintenance cost going forward?
That was gonna, that was gonna be my next question.
No, that's, that's gonna be kind of the next round of things. Um I'm looking at like what irrigation would cause versus what it would cost us to have a um...
Watering truck.
Tank on a trailer, pull it up there with a truck and...
So the sleeves are there, correct?
Yeah.
The water source is not there yet, correct?
Not yet.
Okay, so that's, that, that hits solved eventually regardless of where town hall goes, correct?
Yeah, but...
Do we all agree on that?
Because we own that, we own the property...
Right.
And Mike was gonna go ahead and have the county pull a meter, so we can, you know, we can have that access.
So it wouldn't be off a well, it would be, there's a water line somewhere close by...
Preserve, right, the back of the preserve?
The back of the preserve, that eventually will either feed into that corner lot that we own, but water will get there eventually, so I think the, the, I, I think you can initially address it with a water trunk until we get the water line in there, but correct me if I'm wrong, is there a sleeve there?
Yes.
To run...
Was it involved in that process?
Yes.
What, as far as...
Sleeve for the irrigation to get water to?
Yes, there's a conduit there.
Yeah.
Okay, and we just haven't had bids on what it's gonna cost to run.
We don't have a water source yet.
Yeah.
Hey, if, if somebody can look in my agenda book, under this item, I have a tab, there's an email from the engineer that talks about the cost of um the irrigation.
All right, I'm looking.
Can I, Derek, would our, the person that mows now, would they be able to mow this? Like if we've got grass in there, like...
Yeah, and how do they access it? I mean safely?
Same way they access it now.
Same way they access it now, pull up.
Okay, I found the email.
Get the inside of it. I would honestly, eventually, I would like to see us take it over.
Okay.
I would like to be staffed and...
Mowing it.
Yeah, to be, you know, we take, we, we build a town hall, you know, I wanna see us eventually maintain our own stuff.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know that we can do that.
That'd be the long-term goal, but right now we don't have the...
Right, we're not the man for it.
Yeah, right now we sub it out, you know, we get low maintenance stuff, um...
So...
We've got minimal grass on this design versus having...
What it is now, yeah.
...the weeds that are up there now.
And I, I would look at those strips of grass, not to be more than forty-two inches wide or something, that a simple one, one shot on a...
Yeah, agreed.
A forty-two inch wide mower that goes in and is able to get that done like that, and then it's just a matter of, uh, what um...
So you do not want any sort of planting approval, you just want us to approve the design?
Is that correct Christina?
Yeah, well, we have a, we have an ordinance, I, I can't remember the name off the top of my head right now, but it's something to do with like main roadway landscaping or something, that, that you need to make sure all those plantings and, and all that stuff a year soon.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about.
Before you actually get to the details of the plantings and all that stuff, it, it needs to go through that ordinance to make sure it complies, but so, yeah, yeah, we're just kind of approving the conceptual idea that he's got here, and we'll make sure that we go through the ordinance and the creation of the actual plantings, um and then... So yeah, that's it.
So can we, so can we all agree that whatever is in our ordinance plantings wise, that they can go ahead and do? I don't need to see this again, I want you guys to move forward and get it planted this fall when they're supposed to, I don't wanna, I don't wanna hear about it again.
Hey, just, just a quick question, because just comments up in, does this have to be grass, can it be so?
Again, I, yes, I think it can be, you know, I think any of those color coded... Again, I, yes, I think it can be, you know, I think any of those color-coded items can be switched out.
No, well, see, I love, I love this.
I was thinking in my head, um, stone being in the front where the yellow is, instead of annuals, is an option. Um, I love green, I, I think green just shows life and it, it gives you the contrast. But, you know, if, if there's a consensus for stone instead of grass, and then, and then we don't have to bring a mower up there?
That's what you're thinking then, huh?
I'm just thinking, I'm just thinking simplicity, only because if I look at this, if, if I looked at this, I think that just, I'm looking at this, the, the picture here, if I'm looking at that, I agree with you, totally agree, I love the green, I'm just trying to keep simple, and if that were, if that were stone, this is almost maintenance-free, because these, these
The stones may help with drainage too.
The stamp, the stone would help with drainage. Um, and you break it up with whatever's in the, you know, is, I don't know if that's pine straw or what it is, but I'm just trying, mulch. But just trying to get, I'm just trying to be as maintenance-free as we can.
I mean, I love like some good like river rocks and some, some of the bigger, like, I mean, I love that stuff, I have it in my yard.
Yeah. If we had a water source, if we had, you know, and if it weren't, I don't know how they mow it. But, you know, and I don't know how busy that is, but, you know, do they mow it at night, do they, you know, how do they do it, but I'm just throwing out a suggestion that maybe consider
Yeah, I like that idea a lot, you know, it, it, some metal edging, some, some nice Tennessee river rock.
Yep.
And then, and then the mulch and the plantings
Derek
In the triangle.
Just to remind you, PRG was talking about how they wanted to make sure that the design did not encourage pedestrians to walk through the middle of the roundabout.
Yeah. Correct, definitely.
I mean, if, whether it was like this, people are going to walk through grass, or they're going to walk on stone, I mean, if they're stupid enough, sorry, if you're stupid enough to walk across that and you want to get in the middle of the roundabout, that is not my problem.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we're going to have an issue
Sorry.
Walking through.
But I, I'm, I'm great with stone if you want to swap that out instead, but I honestly, I want
I want the fake grass.
You guys, PR and G, turf, handy turf.
Fake, fake grass?
Turf.
I mean, they make grass right now, I mean, it's, it's expensive, but one-time shot
Do you want this back?
Going through there, and never have to
You'd still have, somebody would still mow it.
But Derek, I'm, I'm great with this, I think it looks awesome, so if, if all PR and G needs to do is pick plants, then I say that needs to be their next thing, and let's move forward and get it on the thing to do, but I'm good with moving forward.
I think consensus is to Jamie's point, thank you, um, to Jamie's point is, this is we, we keep it as maintenance-free and keep that cost, because every time we put a shovel or something, it requires a budget and, and, you know, so.
Yeah, Chris, okay, so what's this email from? Grab that, grab that paper, let me see it. Alright, Christina, this is the email from the about the conduit. Mike, we left the sub drainage contract, hey? Hello? Pay attention, you asked a question, I'm just trying to give you the answer now. When we left the sub drainage contract, our call discussion about some or all the conduit that we had placed there during the discretion, construction, the initial plan was to uh, for water or electric, so the answer is, Christina, each roundabout has a four-inch PVC to accommodate water and electrical, water would be from UCPW, water main along Newtown Road, my thoughts, to have a meter set on the future Town Hall site would be for irrigation only, no sewer charge. Set a second meter to serve the Town Hall facility. To install a water line from irrigation meter to the side of the roundabout, it's between twenty-five hundred and three thousand each. Keep in mind that the Union County's charge is one-inch tap is going to be about eighty-three hundred dollars with a monthly fee of twenty-eight dollars.
So there were questions about irrigation, it kind of sounds like, based on that, that irrigation is probably a, a topic for another year?
Yeah, because we can bring in a water truck and water the plants and I think that's good.
I assume what they do is just drive around and spray out water on one hit, and then they just move on to the next? And they do that depending on?
You should do that, you can do that.
I'm thinking about getting in a new business.
I think that's a good idea. Okay, I'm good with that. Derek, great.
I was, I was talking to, actually my own landscaper about how that would be done, and they do not recommend the piping, it's a one, it's a one-shot system that can go up to, I think, three hundred feet, they can get it, which, no breaks in the line, no, no pressure, that type of thing, so. And I, I think that'd be interesting to see what we get, what kind of bids we get when we get to that point, so, but we need a water source first. Moving forward. Um, next up we have a discussion memorial ideas for community leaders.
Okay, so I finally did, I know Derek listens to you, but I finally got the pictures, so this is the bench, this is, this is one of them, that's the bench on Firethorn, and then this is the giant, this is the bend wall. Obviously not the coat, so don't worry about the coat, it's just the wall. But you could do like a really cool stone wall, like bench area, like at Town Hall when we build it, and we could have like memorial plaques for, like, inhabit, so that we can continuously add. Like, I love that idea, like, that's my favorite.
Which one?
This one.
Which one?
This one.
You, you showed them two pictures.
I think you're showing just the wall.
The wall.
The wall.
Yeah, so they, but the wall, but where does it go? Does it go away to the park, or does it go to the Town Hall?
I just, I just said at Town Hall, can you listen to me?
I'm selective listening.
So I have a four-foot by four-foot brick wall, this is kind of priced
Yep.
Um, I mean, a thousand dollars, you know, you're looking at roughly, you know, just for construction, and then you you can add in your decorative features and your plaques, but, you know, um, stone, maybe a little more.
So in, what, what I, and to that point, what I could see is something like a, a main header, or what that wall is for, um, in, in recognition of service, and then just their names, rather than individual, and maybe their title, or, you know.
I mean, I just think that would be cool to have, like, outside of Town Hall, like, it's a, you know, you've got like a place to go sit, it's got, you know, Village of Marvin on it, and then, you know, and then you have you know, the recognition of who has served the village, you know, and in what capacity, you know, and then, and then be able to add to it. Kind of my, I mean, that's, that, now again, we've got to have Town Hall to do that, I don't know if we want to go ahead and do something now. Um, but I, I, I mean, but I just, I, I love that idea, I mean, I think a bench is great, and I mean, we could absolutely do like a couple at the park, and we probably need some benches at the park.
I think whoever designs your, your facade, your landscaping out front, you ask them to incorporate, you know, do you want the, the curved wall? Um, with kind of like a, an alternate walking entrance, you know, with a monument in the middle? Um, or do you want, you know, two, a third this way, that you, you're forced to see as you, you walk to the front of Town Hall? Or you've got the, the brick monument in the center of the sidewall that you, you know, you're forced to walk past?
Yeah, I guess it's all part of the design to a point, but part of that would be a landscaping thing once the building is in.
But you also have, you also have the other parcel as well, whichever, whatever we put in there, there's, because I, I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity to do two things. One is tell the story of the Village of Marvin. There's, there's got to be things up there that tell the story of the Village of Marvin, but then there's also places to put, whether it's the pavilion, whether it's a stone wall, whether it's a bench, a water fountain, of whatever, that you can say this is commemorated for, you know, the, the first mayor, probably. Am I just, I'm blank.
Don Marlowe.
Yeah.
Right. Um, but, yeah, I guess it's just, it, it's how it's presented, because it, it could be inside the, the building that we do, that's a, a, a area that we have as you walk into the lobby, or it could be something else, I think we just got to get our heads around it.
So I think, so right now, I think this is we, we're going to have to wait till Town Hall's built, and figure out where it's going, so whether we do something there, or whether we do something on the corner.
Or at the park.
Or at the park, so I think we have to kind of wait and see what, what shakes out with Town Hall, but have this kind of, like, having some sort of memorial situation, we need to start factoring that into making sure that we're touching on that as we're, as we're moving forward with Town Hall. But maybe we want to just go ahead and do something like a plaque for the families, to like go ahead and give them something, like, I don't know, I mean, I know they got a plaque, or at least I know Nick got a plaque when he retired, but
Well, maybe something that we can, you know, because I think it would almost be a ceremony type of
Yeah.
Where, for, there's a select few that have made their mark on this, and, um
So for, for right now, we have, I think Lanny, correct me if I'm wrong, his picture is up on the, but it's up high and you can't really see it?
It's up at that height.
Well, you know, look, you got to look up to, it's not, it's eye level.
It's in the barn.
Fair enough, I mean, but there's, you know, certainly a few individuals that, you know, that I think should be recognized, and First Mayor, someone like Lanny, who's been involved on all levels, and obviously Nick's service. Um, so I think it's, uh, to Kim's point, I think there should be something that maybe can be either transferred, or maybe it stays there, and it, and it's addressed in a different way once Town Hall comes, but what that is, is, that's, I guess the question, is it a bench? I like the idea of a bench.
I like the idea of a bench too, but
Because a bench can be moved from the park.
The bench is going to degrade, you know?
Not all benches, but, yeah, I mean.
Well, the bench on five.
That one wouldn't, yeah.
That's that.
That's probably concreted into the ground.
Yep.
If you do a bench, get it, get concrete, or stone.
And can it be moved?
Maybe you'll have to bust that one up, I think.
I'm just curious about it, yeah.
I don't think you can, I think that's concreted into the ground.
Any ideas, Bob?
Yeah, my personal opinion is that I, I'm, you know, I looked at the, the bench idea, I know that's really popular at Central Park. I know that the reason for that is there's not a lot of places that people can memorial, be memorialized, obviously in New York City. I have a relative who was very prominent in Providence, Rhode Island, who had a bench, uh, that was really the last one by a lake. And, um, as much as I was enamored with that, it's hidden, it's not seen. I, I like the idea, my first thought was the plaque on the wall. Uh, I think that this is going to be quite a ceremonial situation of us putting this village hall together, and I think it gives great homage to, uh, the leaders that started Marvin. Uh, so I'm, my first gut deal was memorialize them on the village hall. Um, and I don't know the architectural design of the village hall from the outside, walking in, but I thought, oh, it could be attached to the village hall in itself, and it's memorialized there. If we're going to have a wall of some sort, um, I like that idea too, and I like the idea that other people can be added as those. But I, I think, my personal opinion is, I think you need to really look at even the name of the village hall, and I know it's going to be Marvin Village Hall, but I, but I'm thinking, you know, in, in memory of, or something that really commemorates the first mayor, you know, that was here when it, well, and then the incorporation, we're going to be in the actual village from incorporation. So I, my personal opinion is with the plaque, and not knowing, as we, you're discussing, Joe, you know, the permanence of, of Park, and, and, you know, as CP and I were talking, I, I thought, yeah, if we did it on a bench, it could be moved, but, um, that means we have to do some sort of landscaping or something outside the hall. Um, anyway, how, how do you want to get the flag?
So if we just look right outside our door here, we have a flagpole, and at the base of the flagpole is a former mayor that I think a former councilman had I don't know, erected or whatever, I'm not even sure who, who paid for that, but I can see a flagpole at the village hall that is raised every day, and then maybe somewhere in that area, a wall that we could, you know, memorialize those few individuals that have made a difference and stuff. That, that may be, but I think Kim saying, asking something to, um, I mean, maybe we can just say it along, in presenting a plaque to each of those families, and the most recent two, a plaque to them for now, and then let them know that we are incorporating some sort of wall with, with, with a plaque that'll be maybe next to the, of the flagpole where, you know, and that's all going to be in the design factor, but for now, is there something we could present to each family, um, and, and, and just recognizing their service?
I mean, I think we need to do something.
Yeah, so we can do something, but in, in addition to that, we're saying, hey
We're going to do something bigger at Town Hall, or
We're going to do something, you know, that's going to be incorporated at Town Hall, that'll be more of a permanent thing for the community.
Yeah.
Again, get your, your heritage, your understanding as people come in, because I can assure you, a lot of people don't know the history of Marvin, so.
Sure, and I, I would understand the sense of, you know, I'm going to say, her destiny, but it, because it'll be a while before everything gets complete, I can see that.
That's why I'm thinking that we just do something now.
So how about if we, um, maybe make a suggestion to staff to come up with two separate plaques for both, um, Mayor Pro Tem Nick Dispenzare, and also, um, Don Carr, um, who recently have passed, and a plaque that we can present their families and, uh, you know, related to that. And then we can either have a ceremony to present it to them in a regular meeting, or we can do that, you know, in a, in a personal way, or, or whatever way we decide to do it, but let's get that going and get approval on that for, maybe we have it for the regular meeting, um, the verbiage anyway.
Yeah.
And then, uh, we can get
What, a resolution, some sort of resolution?
Could you, could you get that unentitled for the, uh, the Town Hall meeting?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah. And even a proclamation, we could, we could, uh, we could probably write for both individuals. So, that, I, I think we can at least get that going in the works, and then when we present it, we just, we just, either it's personally, privately, or say we're, we're working on something more permanent for, that's going to be incorporated at the Town Hall.
So just for the, just for the sake of clarity, so come up with the verbiage, draft a proclamation for both, or one for each, or?
One for each.
One for each.
And have that at the, have that at your next regular meeting, or the Town Hall?
Um, well, just see if we can discuss
Have it in the next meeting, so we can discuss that.
Yeah.
Discuss it, okay.
Yeah, whether we come to, we may come to an agreement to say, yes, we like that for a plaque for each individual, and then, um, then it can be presented, we can invite the families if they'd like to come to the meeting, have it at the very beginning of the meeting, and then we can read a proclamation too, so a proclamation for both, and also what verbiage we want on the plaque, recognizing their service.
So you guys come up with what you think it is, and then we'll search it up.
Okay.
Great.
Alright.
Thank you, thanks Derek.
Yeah, before I exit, these are, um, I know you can't talk about it, because these are pictures of Tullamore Phase Two, where they're building some of the bridges.
Oh, good, cool.
Great.
Grab that on the way out.
Alright, thanks Derek.
Thank you.
Uh, next up we have discussion of educational plan on, on referendum.
So at the last meeting, the captain asked me to put together kind of a communication piece for the referendum, the charter, and inside your agenda packet is just kind of the gist of what, um, what I kind of put together in September. Some proposals for some, some email posts, and topics, and kind of what some of those questions would be. And then pretty much the same information will be distributed in October, and then just two pieces would be sent out in November, so just want the captain to look over this. Um, and, you know, see if there's any other questions that they wanted to clarify, or if they wanted to make sure that we addressed. Um, and then also to, you know, make sure that y'all are good with this.
Can we, Christina, can we, um, before you send them out in September, can we see them at the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and then I would suggest that the end of every, um, every piece of information that you send out about this, you have like a sample ballot that actually has the exact verbiage that's going to be on there, with a yes/no box, with the yeses checked. And you do that on every single piece that's sent out, because then people will get in their heads, you know, the repetitiveness of yes, yes, I need to vote yes for this, I mean, when it's, when I get to vote for in November, it's going to be on the ballot, so I need to vote yes.
Okay.
And the box is checked.
And the box is checked, correct.
So a sample ballot?
Sample ballot, yes/no, with the yeses checked, on every single, every single time something goes out, have it at the very bottom of the email post, whatever it is, so that people can see it, they know what the verbiage is, and they see yes checked.
So...
Okay, all email communication.
And this is a crazy question, but as we're doing this, and have you checked with Chaplain on, like, is there any violations of the Hatch Act, or anything like that, that you think we may be crossing over, in, in the sense that, that we can or cannot have? I mean, my whole thing is, and I look at the form of government, and ninety, or I don't even know what, it's a very high percentage of the towns in North Carolina use that form of government. It may not be the same for how many towns have a mayoral vote, so they're two separate issues. But the majority of towns that we're trying to get this to go to, and again, it can be changed, are, you know, but are we violating any type of Hatch Act? Does that make sense?
I mean, I literally understand what you're saying, but anybody listening, like, has no clue what you're saying, because you're like, you stop in the middle, you start another thought, and then you stop, and you don't finish it. I know what you're saying.
There's two things, yeah. So are we, my, my question is, have we brought up to Chaplain as we go through with this process, any legal issues of us as a council presenting this, why we want to see this passed as a council?
I, I think you should definitely check with Chaplain. I can't imagine that we're doing anything wrong, because it's coming from us, we want this, we're putting it on the ballot. I can stand outside at the polling places and say, you need to vote yes for this, and I'm not doing anything wrong. But ask Chaplain, Christina.
But, but...
On the sample ballot as well, this communication stuff, too?
Yes, everything, everything.
But the crossover point is, you're using taxpayer dollars to push an, an agenda and stuff.
But it's the, but it's our agenda. It's the council unanimously.
I, I get what you're saying, but also it...
I'm just asking.
I know, that's why I said, have it checked.
This was, this was all brought about by a petition that was sent in, so...
Yeah.
You know what, somebody is...
We're responding to a petition, because we put forward, I, I think, is, my understanding is, and Chaplain can confirm this, is that we had a right to change it.
For our charter.
Municipalities have the right to change that, and it's just this, should it be put on the agenda? Again, I'm just asking, make sure we're covering all bases, because, you know, we...
Somebody, somebody challenged it, they want it on the ballot, so now we are, we are presenting our side of why we want it changed, and putting that information out there. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. But ask Chaplain, Christina.
I will.
All right.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Anything else?
I just put a note real fast, though, before, so our meeting, Austin, correct me if I'm wrong, is September 11th, is that correct?
September 8th.
September 8th. 8th. So if that, if, if y'all want to see the actual first post before, you know, at the meeting, before it goes out, then, then it would just kind of be packed a little bit to the end of, not, not really the end, but the middle, the end of September, if y'all are okay with that.
Right, because we'll get approval. We need approval.
If y'all wanna approve the actual, like, communication piece that goes out
Yeah.
at the September meeting, it won't go out until after the meeting, basically.
Yeah. And then we could have one other shot at, one more time to get it out?
No, four posts, four posts, two posts.
Okay.
Wait, what?
Four posts.
Oh, yes, yes.
Four posts, two posts. That's fine. Christina, and it can be ready to go, and we can give the thumbs up, and you can send it out that night, and there's the first one that's gone.
Okay.
That's fine. I wanna see it before it goes out.
Yeah.
Okay.
And agree to any changes. Yep, okay. Thank you. Next up, we have discussion consideration disclaimer statements and directions of staff on use of protocol.
I think these all sound fine.
I, I, I like, I like how you put this together, Christina.
Me, too.
So I just need direction as far as how y'all want me to go about, like, u-using them, because we obviously don't man, you know, social media posts every single day. We only, we only see it when somebody brings it up to us.
Then I...
And we need to, we need to, where we're supposed to use these.
Whenever we bring it up, because I guarantee one of us is getting, whenever something goes out, I guarantee one of us is seeing it, and we will let you know.
So as long as you...
And that's, that's on, that's on council. I'm sure that, you know, I'm sure with Austin being on Nextdoor and whatever else he's on, I'm sure, like, he'll, he may get dings about Marvin.
I only see things that are directly linked to our page.
Okay, well, and I mean...
Someone's discussing it, I don't, I won't necessarily see that.
Okay. Well, he may, he may see something that's, you know, to our page, but if not, one of us sees it, or I guarantee a citizen sees it and will let us know. So we'll let you know, and then you can send it out. I think they all sound good.
At any point in time, any member of council can let us know when to post that, and when we are to do it.
I think so, yes. I'm good with that.
Should you make a motion on that?
Uh...
From our direction?
Yeah.
I just wanted to be clear that we would be taking direction from one at that moment to, to do it.
Yeah, I'm sure I have no problem with that. Direction from one council member. I'm just thinking down the road, and stuff like that.
Just for the sake of posting the disclaimers.
Okay, well, then how you wanna handle it? Because, you know, again, we meet twice, now and then, but then we meet twice, so how you wanna handle it?
Well, but...
If y'all wanna...
Not saying it, except it's not coming from...
Here's the thing, when you read that, what she's putting out is just addressing whether it's positive or negative. That, that's a very generic canned response to whatever it may be. So someone puts something out...
There's been no official position or approval.
Right.
Like, that's, that's just a blanket statement.
Right. So I don't know why that can't be done by, by staff.
Or Christina, or Christina, I mean, I hate to say it, but I can call and say, hey, Christina, something was on Nextdoor, here's what it says, I think we need to, you know, do one of the disclaimers, and then you're gonna have to call everybody.
Okay.
I mean, I hate to take your time to do it, but I know, but I know what Joe's saying, because when you got divided, you've got one person that's like, send it out, send it out, send it out, send it out. I know, I know what you're saying.
Future councils, it can be a real problem, you know, if you get someone who's just rogue and wants to...
I know.
Yeah, and I, I totally understand what you're saying, and agree with what you're saying. But the reason we put this in place was to have some type of message out. It is a, that is not a message of affirmation or denial, it's just saying, we're not taking a stance. And then we follow that up with our next meeting to say, so, I don't know that I would push it to staff and go, you've already put the criteria in here, whether it's, whether it's a...
Blog.
A non-Marvin blog, Marvin sponsored, general website disclaimer, and when something comes up that's, that is put out on any kind of social media, that disclaimer can, one of those, it just fits in the category, and it goes out.
So, so what you're saying, if I were to, okay, if I'm gonna put this and give a specific, for instance, and someone says something that's absolutely, we all agree, without having a meeting, maybe individually talking to Christina, that that's absolutely false, bad information that's going out, then we're giving her the authority as a staff member, to your point, to just basically say that this, identifying that this is not the official position of the Village of Marvin.
Well, it's fair and bad.
Right, right, right. And then saying, this issue will be addressed at the next meeting, and a formal statement will be coming, or something like that, and, and leave it at that until we have a chance, because the key is to get all of us in the same room together.
Right.
And we don't wanna call special meetings every time somebody puts out a blog, and, and...
That's a lot of minutes.
Yeah, I know. And then, and it's, the, 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 the key is, we're giving the authorization to our administrator or staff.
That's what I was getting, to say, right now, we are saying, when, when one of us, or somebody sees something, and they bring it to Christina's attention, at that point is in Christina's hands to make the decision whether she's going to put out one of these responses. I'm not telling her to do it. I'm just saying, hey, I saw something on Nextdoor, it says blah, 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 or I'll cut and paste it and send it to you. It is now your decision how you wanna respond to it.
But, but I'm guessing, I'm guessing there is gonna be, there's some, some sort of wording we can put in place, that can be basically, Kim, you see it, and you say, Christina, I just wanna make you aware of this. Christina looks at it and says, okay, that's very one-sided, or whatever, it certainly doesn't come from the village, let's put out this blanket statement in regards to the posting on Nextdoor neighbor, that, you know...
Here's the wording.
Right.
These, these are the three words.
Yeah, you don't have to, the only decision that has to be made at this is Christina to decide which category it falls under, and it goes out, whether it's a positive or a negative.
Right.
And then, because see, that's the reason we put this together, is to be able to have an, an immediate response.
Yes.
And then it is not until we meet again that we can put out the official response, that back, that puts, puts our position on this.
Christina, you may want to add, like, a line that further information will be forthcoming from the village council as a whole.
Right.
Something like that.
Once they can discuss this matter, or whatever, if it's, if it, if that...
If it warrants that.
If it warrants that.
But you may wanna add just a little, you know, something like that. But I think that anybody can tell you that they've seen something, because I'm sure that you have gotten emails from, from residents about stuff, and at that point, it is now in your hands, you are the administrator, you make that decision. I'm not telling you to do it, I'm just giving you information that it's out there, you make the decision.
Just, just for the sake of clarity.
Yep.
So you're agreeing that Christina should contact each of you to get an erection?
No.
Okay, so you're not doing it.
No direction.
Okay.
Christine, we are giving Christina right now the authority to make the decisions as it, as they come about, and she can make that decision. I am, Jamie is merely saying, hey, Christina, I saw this on Nextdoor. Joe says, hey, Christina, I saw this on Facebook, or, hey, I saw this email go out, Christina. You know, you may wanna send some...
But a formal, but to issue a formal response after the next council meeting?
Yes, something like, the council will address this, you know, after they've had a chance to meet, or something like that. Christina, you can come up with the wording, but I like these. And then we're just saying, hey, we saw this out there, you deal with it what you want. And then she now has, we are now giving her the authority now, together as we are meeting, to handle it as she sees fit.
Because minus this, nothing goes out.
Yep.
Yeah. And is the direction just come from council, or can someone say, hey, I saw, someone call in and... From the community?
Let's just leave it up to Christine.
I think you're on better ground for it to do it this way.
Yeah, Christine, Christine, she, she, she's the one that, you know...
Nonpartisan.
And Christine, to that, to that point, to add on to it, you should not have to call us
Correct. If you see something.
To update us, let, let's eliminate that step. All we want is a placeholder that says, all right, we see that this is out there, this, we've just selected which one it is, that's the disclaimer that goes out, and then hopefully, whether it's, you know, our next council meeting is right close, and we can get an official response out. The last thing any one of these should be, once council, once council, there'll be an official notice, official position coming out on this topic, or this map.
Sounds fun.
So you do need a motion on this?
Christina, you want us to make a motion on this?
No, I got it.
Okay.
We're good.
All right. Bob, you good with that?
Oh, I'm very good with it. Yeah, and I like the way Jamie expressed it, the way we deal with it. I think it needs to be cleaned fast.
Yep. Okay, cool. Good job, guys.
Yes, you were great writing it up.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, nine, a discussion of CCOG and consider acceptance of report recommendations for fiscal year 2021.
So as you all are aware, we have recently done a personnel study. This was as a result of discussions we had at the budget retreat to really determine if we were adequately staffed or not. And so what Tom did was come in and did an assessment, very detailed assessment, and they sat down with all staff members, went over all of their job descriptions, job duties, what they do. They kind of looked at some things in terms of, tried to figure out what their recommendations are gonna be, and their assessment. And so what they have determined is that, you know, we do need some additional staff members in certain areas, we do need some restructuring, and we do have a little bit of concerns that, that, you know, need to be addressed or dealt with, some of those being cross-training and backup systems that we currently don't, don't have right now. And, you know, being so short-staffed, there's not a whole lot of time that we have to develop these systems, so that's just something to keep in mind. There's also some need for restructuring certain positions, like finance and parks, based on what it is that they do. And all of those are in the, in the description sheet, I'm sorry, the, the study. There's a couple of things I did want to point out. Some of those being that we have some opportunities in here, we do have a lot of, I think one of the bigger things that they have recognized in here is that because staff are so, like, pushed, and have, you know, triple lows in some situations, that there's a lot of burnout, a little paralysis associated with that, that we need to recognize, and that is a, but it's an issue moving forward for high turnover rates. So that's something that council should be concerned with, for sure, moving forward. But the recommendations that they have are on the very last section, the very last page for 2021, and that's basically to update all of the job descriptions. And at the time that they had done this recommendation, we had not hired someone for the clerk position. And so their recommendation was to, to basically merge that position into clerk slash HR. And since we've already hired that position, I think we should probably just take that recommendation out for now, and we can adjust the other job descriptions based on what's not been filled yet. So if you look on page 17...
Christina, did you not tell me that they were going to update all the job descriptions?
They're going to update all the job descriptions that they're providing changes to, like, for instance, Rohit's position, they're changing, they're, they're suggesting a job title change. And Derek's position, they're suggesting the same thing, but my position, or Nancy's position, they're not recommending any title changes to it, so they're not changing any of his job descriptions.
Okay.
That's true. They also...
So what do you, what do you need from us?
Basically, if y'all are all on board with the changes that they recommended for 2021, as suggested on page 17, then what we'll do is go through and start making those changes from the job descriptions, minus the clerk position, and they will, they will basically finish their duties and their contract, change those job descriptions, and then we will start looking at the cost of implementation for the other recommendations, which are to hire additional staff. And, and that wouldn't be until 2021, 22 budget discussions, so we would, you know, we would have those things laid out between now and then.
Okay.
Do they recommend that the actual title change, like, do they provide it, or do we have to come up with it?
No, they provided it. It's, it's within the document. So let me, let me see.
Christina, while you're looking for that, I think that we have, this council has always been very supportive of you guys are overworked and need more assistance. So if that's, again, if that's what COGS has evaluated and told us, then I agree with that, because we've been saying it. So if you guys need to get more help, hire more people.
Well, I think when, when you start to look at next year's budget, and you start, and you, and you start to look at budgets thereafter, the, the one thing you have to, you, you have to account for one of the biggest things that you talked about, pressure on staff, staff morale, staff turnover, and, and all of those pieces that are in there. I mean, you can't, you can't, we, nor the village, should expect two to three people to take over what you've got, what here, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12? Yeah, 12 people in there. But it's still getting done. So when you start to look at next year, when you, when we start to look at next year's budget, next year's budget should probably include, this is just a roadmap, this is just a path to, to set what's there, let's look at adding two more people. And now we'll just go back to this study to figure out let's, level of importance, let's, let's structure it and prioritize it, and then we go with it from there. And that's gonna come from your... And that's going to come from your direction because you're going to, you see this every day. And.
You're going to say, we really need X and we really need Y.
Right. And then that goes into the budget. And then next year, we look at adding one, possibly two more. But I think this, this was great. This is much needed because I said it back in the work session, work session. This is.
Skeleton crew you guys are running on.
Yeah. And it's unfair to you and I will always go back to the fact that we always want to keep taxes low. No one wants to raise taxes. Totally agree with that. However, if your tax base is based off an incorrect number, that, the only way that you can identify that it's an incorrect tax base number is to provide this information. Because we identified our tax base needs to increase by one cent because we were short a sheriff, a deputy. Now we added the deputy. Now because of this, we could say we're raising it two cent. And this is the reason because we never even addressed it before.
Yep. I think that's good.
What we do then, we're going to move forward with the changes. And they were defined on page 11. Finance assistant should be accounting technician. Coach manager should be facilities manager. And then the planning and zoning administrator is, they've dubbed it as planning and zoning manager, however, still need the term zoning administrator in there. So Rohit and I had a discussion about senior planner and zoning administrator. And so if council's okay with that, then we can make those changes. And what we'll do is we'll bring them back to council at a later date so you can actually see them before they're, you know, they're actually done and y'all can approach them.
Sounds good to me.
And then we'll start planning for next year's, some of the things in next year. There's some suggestions in here for this year as far as like contracting out for code enforcement, which is something that I think desperately needs to take place. And I think both Rohit and Derek would agree with that in terms of cost. I'm not really sure what that's going to be yet.
I mean, we've been talking about doing that for years.
Yeah, and so that's something that they're recommending this year, however, that is not something that we budgeted for. So we'll start looking into these things and if they cost money, then what we will do is just put them on the list of budget items for next year.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I mean, start, yeah, start finding out how much this is going to cost and what it's going to take to get, you know, to contract out the code enforcement and to add these, you know, additional positions. And then we'll start, you know, we'll work backwards from there.
Okay, so we will start working on that and we'll come back to council for any additional things needed. And then when we actually make the changes to the job descriptions, we'll let y'all see those as well.
Perfect. Good job.
Thank you Christina.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you Christina, excellent on that. Ten, discussion of revised defense policy resolution.
So this is, y'all remember a couple of months ago, we had, Chaplin and I had some questions about a couple of things in this policy. It was a little bit unclear about what we were to do when insurance wasn't provided, like insurance coverage was automatic. It's clear whether to bring it to council or let them decide, or if we just go ahead and assume coverage based on the fact that insurance was covering it. So Chaplin and I just wanted to clean it up a little bit just for sake of clarity for us. And that's what this is. It's just, just a document that explains a little bit more in detail what it is, the responsibility of the attorney and administrator in terms of the coverage when there's insurance provided. Since this was actually done by Chaplin, so he's already approved this document and the red line changes are there. If council is in agreement with it, we will put it on the consent agenda or we can handle it for a discussion item at the next regular meeting. But this is, I'm not asking for a formal approval here. I'm just asking, you know, you guys to consider, we'll put it on the consent agenda next time or as an item, if you want questions answered from Chaplin.
So this is really for you and the attorney to figure out specifics when, if and when we get sued.
Yeah, it just, it cleans up a couple of things that we had questions on, so, but in a nutshell, yes.
Okay. I'm good with it.
So do we want to put it on the consent agenda as this is, or do we want to, I mean, I'm not an attorney, so I'm assuming this is, this is covering what we want to cover.
I'm good.
I can put it as a regular item and if y'all have questions between now and then, Chaplin will be there to answer them.
Let's do that with him and Eric in case Andy has anything or Bob, would we have another chance to pour over this and make sure we're crossing our Ts and dotting our Is on that. All right. Nothing else there?
No.
All right. Next up, we have discussion of village center district strategic plan committee.
You skeptical?
Eleven.
I'm sorry. Discussion on outside funding policy.
So this is an item that y'all have been talking about for a couple of months now. Just got time to actually finalize it. But this basically just goes through a timeline of what we would expect from any outside entities that want to request money from us. Y'all, y'all recall that you've had a couple of people come and ask for funding, one of those being, I can't remember the name of the park. It was a.
W C W A A.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then Gene Stowe recently asked for some. So this outlines what, like entities we would give money to. And that basically boils down to anyone that benefits citizens within Marvin and that has a IRS recognized 501(c) status. And the policy here presents that we would earmark $5,000 per year for these. But y'all, you know, y'all can change that one out. It's just, that's kind of where I started. Whatever y'all want to do.
And but it doesn't specifically say each individual, what you could give up. If it's 5,000, you can potentially give 5,000 to one specific entity? Or is it written any clearer than that? Or is there a limit? Do we want to put a limit on each individual 501(c) that's directly affected the village of Marvin? Or I guess I'm not clear.
The dollar amount's really just for staff to earmark in the budget purposes. And 5,000, you may not want to start with 5,000. You may want to start with 1,000 and see where that goes. But that would be for council to determine, once they look at all of the requests that are made. You know, you may have a request of $1,000 from one entity and you may have a request from 10,000 from another entity. But when you look at those requests, you would be able to determine based on, you know, their presentation of which one or how you want to divvy out the money.
Okay.
You would be able to get them all at the same time.
So I'm going to be probably the unpopular person here. We don't have any money, extra money to spend anyway. So, I mean, our first responsibility is to, like, the services and the citizens right now that we serve, right? So.
Which we've already budgeted for.
That we've already budgeted for. We don't have extra money. So do I think that we can go out and, you know, I mean, we're sitting here, you know, talking about adding additional staff positions. We're talking about finding money for safety for crosswalks. Like, for me, somebody coming to the village of Marvin and saying, well, again, unpopular and that's okay. You know, some of your residents may use this park, so you should give us some money. I mean, I'm not, I'm not down for it.
I'll let the other council member speak.
And we can always put, you know, like $500 per year and let y'all make those decisions in. I mean, 5,000 is kind of steep. If y'all want to make it, you know, real low and then, you know, you don't have to pay the $500 or whatever it is. It's just, that would be kind of the policy that you would look at these proposals in February, March-ish, and then you can make your determination at that time.
I think having a policy is, is a good thing because then we have something to go on. And I do think $5,000 is steep for, you know, a total since again, we don't have two nickels to rub together extra right now. But, but if somebody's coming to ask me for money, that's not going to, yeah.
All right, I'll speak.
Go ahead.
I think it's a lot easier just to say, we have a policy that we do not provide funds towards any group, 501(c)s and stuff like that. However, we would be happy to support you in our blurbs to help you raise funds throughout the community that this sends out to. Because if they want to raise funds and if certain individuals, I know when we do our charitable giving personally, that's something that we sit down as a family, my wife and I, and sometimes the kids, we involve them in charities that they're, they would like to support. And we make annual donations to them. So, so now we're taking taxpayer money that they believe is really meant for all these, you know, staff, whatever it is we do that creates, sheriff, that's a, now we're picking and choosing. And it changes based on who's in office. And I think it's, if we make a simple policy that we cannot support those types of things because it's not going to really benefit. I think it's quite frankly, a little bit of a stretch that we're, we're contributing to the road issue that's over on Joe Carr because, but I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. And there's, there's right and wrong, but I don't think we get into where we spend our town's taxpayer dollars and supporting Boy Scouts and I'm not picking on Boy Scouts or whatever group that you want to be, whether it's W C W A A. That's just my feeling, but I would be more than happy to support them in our blurbs.
I will say that the blurb that we sent out for Gene Stowe, he didn't, I haven't heard from him lately, but I know he had a $1,000 donation within the first week. So I'll believe that.
We can help support that. And that's our policy that we will be happy to discuss your issue, put it out on our blurb. And if we get consensus from the group at the time to put it on our blurb to support that foundation or whatever it is, then we wish you the best of luck with that. But that's the opinion of one. That doesn't vote, by the way.
Well, see, opinion too, because I totally agree exactly what you just said, Joe. I think it's simpler to just have not a policy and wanting to assist. Thank you, Austin, because I was going to ask where that postcard came from, who paid for it. When I saw that, I went, I got it yesterday in the mail and I went, okay, did we contribute to this or where did this come from?
No, no. It said at the bottom that it came from his nonprofit.
Yeah, and you got, you just brought up a good point. I don't think it's that we don't have a policy. I think we have a policy that says we don't do that. However, and I think that policy should include that we don't provide a list of, I think they can get that list of Marvin residents. If they're going to send out what we just got in the mail.
Yeah.
From Gene Stowe, that's on him to do that.
Yeah.
I don't think we send out an email list that that's part of the policy. But we would be happy to come to some sort of verbiage that supporting this foundation, hey, check out X Y Z Foundation that's asking for funding and that's part of our policy. So I think a policy needs to be written. It just has to be specific that we're not going to necessarily use taxpayer funds, but we would help support them when the council agrees to go down that road, if that makes sense.
Can I ask, Austin, the gentleman that approached us in our work session in January that had wanted us to contribute or put in money towards the, what is it, the soccer field, the ballpark that's over in Wesley Chapel?
Optimus Park.
You want to talk about, would that, what is, would that fall in the same category here?
Yes.
Okay. Because I didn't know if that fell into advertising or, you know, because we were talking about a banner of some sort or whatever, so I'm just asking.
No, it would fall in the same thing. It's an outside funding policy, outside funding.
Jamie.
No, I just, I agreed with wholeheartedly and probably even further with Kim because the fact that you put a budgetary number in there, someone's going to come in and change that number. That is, that is something you're going to have to budget to. And I'm not prepared to do that. And we have all these other issues that we can't, and it turns, it turns it into a political discussion. Someone could come in and say, why did you give W C W? I'm a, I've been living here for 20 years. I don't have kids. All my kids are gone and I'm paying for that over there? Well, then I got to answer that. And I'm sorry, I don't want to do that. So we're not here, we're here to manage the village of Marvin and its constituents. We're not here to be to fund these 501(c)s. To your point, Joe, we can put it out there as a message and say, you know, if you would like to provide funding or some donations to W C W, whatever, please reach out to so-and-so. Great organization and they do great work and here's their list of, here's the website that you can go reach out. No.
I think, I agree. I mean, I'm.
I think the policy should be a simple policy. We don't have a.
We don't contribute.
We don't contribute.
But we, but we will, just like I said, but we will on our, on our sources, if you, if you want us to, we will put out, we're not endorsing you.
Nope.
We are just getting the information out to our residents.
So the process would be X Y Z company comes to whoever wants to get on our agenda to present something of what their, their mission is or whatever.
That's a no. No, that's a no. I don't want to hear, I'm not going to give them money.
But again, it goes back to all.
No, no, no.
But then all Christine has to do, because again, we're adding steps to things that we shouldn't have to even add steps to. Christine goes, first, let me just tell you before you want to ask to present to council, our policy is we don't.
Right, right.
And then she, it's all fact-based. Everything that we should be doing here should not be political. It should be fact-based. The decisions are just decisions based off budgetary and that kind of stuff. And it's so.
I don't want to waste my time listening to somebody present something that I am not going to give them money for.
Well, the not that you're going to give money for is, is you're going to, you're going to at some point.
Not that I'm going to endorse them either.
Hold on, hold on. At some point, you, what I'm saying is, if, we'll get to the point is, do we put it on our blurb? We have to discuss it. Well, are you going to discuss it when you don't really know anything about it? So if you don't want to put it on the agenda, we have Christina, hold on, before you shake your head, we have Christina kindly say that, you know, just to let you know going in that we don't, I'll ask to put it on the agenda. It may not go on the agenda. I recommend you come and do a three-minute blurb on public comments of what your group is and how you would, and we can decide if we put that on the agenda to say, okay, this goes on a blurb because this is a good clause, I know that. It's, we're not spending any money.
I know. Instead of doing all that, having them come in here, Christina can say, hey, send me an email. We are not going to endorse you, but send me an email, what you are, what you want, what you're about, yada, yada, yada. I will present it to council. They can make a decision if they then want to send it out. It's not an endorsement, but then we can put it out to our residents and then our residents can make that decision.
Okay.
Don't even have them come in here.
Okay. Trust me, I agree with the policy should be, we have a policy of not contributing any funds to any 501(c) or any group, period. However, we would, if it's, if it's a group that the council decides, I guess my question is how does the council decide if it's a group without discussing it? Is it through an email or something like that? Or is it someone who's, has every ability to come in and present for three minutes, whatever they want to talk to?
Sure, absolutely. They can absolutely do that, but I think instead of having them come in, then they can just as easily send Christina an email. Christina's like, hey, listen, you know, they're not going to.
Save you a little bit of time here.
Save you some time. Send me an email. I will present it to council. They can make the decision if they would then like to forward it out to the residents.
Okay.
So you guys need to work on that. Sorry, Christina.
Okay, we'll basically change the policy where it says we don't contribute, but we will look at putting it out on our sources.
Okay.
And we'll get that policy changed up and give it back to you, you did in front of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to, we're going to take a break at noon, right?
Yeah.
Okay, so next up, we have a discussion of village center district strategic plan committee with Union County Planner, Emma Lane.
Okay, so in the, in the case that, yeah, yeah, she, she's not here today.
She's not?
Yeah, she's not. She had a meeting that was at 11:30 and since we couldn't guarantee what time she'd be.
Oh, man, we were set plus. Oh, she had a meeting at 11:30.
She has a meeting at 11:30, so she, and she has set up for it. So since we couldn't guarantee what time she'd be on the agenda, she'd rather be at the regular session where we could probably guarantee she'd be closer to the beginning. In any case, there are five applications for the, and I know this is a future item. I'm just saying for timeline's sake, we don't have all seven. I'm just saying for timeline's sake, we don't have all seven, and so I anticipate we will have seven applications, but I'd rather start the committee in October, October first week, because orienting, like if we had five people and then we started a meeting and then a few more people joined, it would be very complicated to orient them again at the October meeting. So, so the point is that Emma could be at the regular session, and we'll have all seven applications or maybe more by then, and then have the first meeting of the committee in October first week. I think it would be October 1st.
We have five applications, right?
Yeah, we have five applications.
I think I just got six in my email.
Christina.
She gone.
She's muted.
Christina, unmute yourself.
You want me to unmute you? Actually...
Just unmute her. Hey, so I'm sorry, I was just looking at the, because I know we're going to go over these applications later, right? But I was just looking at my stack of paper here, and Christina, you had an email in here about traffic calming at the Preserve. Did you mean to talk about that back then?
Oh, that, no, 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 that was just, they're asking, they're asking for some stuff at that point, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, they are. But it was in my package.
That was just in case y'all asked any questions about what neighborhoods had Asperd, that type of thing.
Oh, okay, all right, okay, sorry. I know that wasn't right there, but I just wanted to make sure we didn't miss something. Okay. So we're going to go over these applications later?
Yeah, we're going to go over the applications later, and then in the next meeting, we'll go over the remaining applications that we expect to receive, and then have the first meeting of the committee in October 1st.
Okay, and Emma's on board, ready to help?
Yes, yes, she's on...
She's super excited, like, she's like, woo, this is going to be awesome!
Yeah, she's got experience with Main Street, and she was happy to get involved with our...
So how much of her will be involved? Will she be attending meetings or...
She, she would be kind of like coordinating the topics, whereas I would be doing the light work of between meetings.
Okay.
Yeah, that's essentially it. And we can talk about that more in detail when she's here.
Okay. Awesome, awesome. She's nice?
Uh, yeah, she's nice, she's great, she's, I mean, from what I, she's a current Union County Planner, so I've worked with her in other...
Oh, awesome, okay, good.
And, and that's also another reason why, you know, tapping her for this is really good synergy, because we do, do get a lot of services from the county.
Do, do, we do, do, good.
Yeah, yeah. So I think it would be great to have her on board. But we'll talk about that. Guest requesting...
It's not the worst thing I've seen.
Okay, so you are expecting more, do people call you and say they're...
Uh, yeah, yeah, somebody just submitted an application today, so obviously we don't have it in front of you, and then another couple of people...
I haven't got the one, I literally got it in this meeting, so you guys don't have that one yet.
Yeah, and then another couple of people said they would like to submit an application.
Are we going to take more than seven?
Um, that's a possibility, yeah, I don't see why not.
I think we should top it at 10.
Yeah, that's fair, and since we're going to be on WebEx anyway...
When they establish the committee, I thought they established seven members.
Yeah, but I'm...
You had to amend it, yeah.
You have to vote, you have to vote to change that.
Well, and if we want to vote, we got to appoint people to, right, so we could always change it, okay.
They're all, they're all applicants are solid people, I don't think any of them would be rejected.
Good.
The latest is a planning board member, so I'll send that one out later to you.
Okay, thank you. You could probably tell us who it is once we get there.
That's fine.
Okay.
All right. Second up, next up, we have 13, discussing consideration of purchasing a LiDAR gun to assist in traffic enforcement.
As long as this is owned by the Village of Marvin, I'd like to make a motion to purchase a LiDAR gun to assist in traffic enforcement.
How much are they?
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
Twenty-two hundred dollars.
And why, if we're not trained to use it?
They are.
I know, but we're not, and why would we own it, not the sheriff?
Because if the sheriff owns it, then he can give it to everybody else. If we own it, and that's what's happening now, and that's why our deputies don't have it all the time. So if we own it, they come in, they pick it up, and then they drop it back off.
So your motion is to purchase a LiDAR gun to assist in traffic enforcement, to be owned, be owned for that?
As long as it's owned by the Village of Marvin.
Not to be removed from Village of Marvin limits.
Yeah, my, here's my thing. People, they do a great job of finding places to park, they do, and we just never know when they're there. But if he's going down, if he's driving from Marvin Road and he's just going that way, and a car goes by him 70 miles an hour, he can't prove to me, yeah, I was going 70.
Well, at that point, he could turn around and just pursue him, they have, they have judgment to make that call.
I get it. I'm putting myself in the driver's seat, and I'm going, show me where I was doing, because, trust me, I know this firsthand. How fast were you going? Well, I wasn't going 70. Okay? So in other words, so in other words, he's, unless he's parked, he has no, he has, yes, because he could say, he can give him a ticket for unsafe movement or something like that, but he can't give him a ticket. That attorney, that attorney can't fight.
Because he doesn't have the LiDAR in there, or because he's driving? I thought they can get you to come the opposite way. I thought they can get you the opposite, come the opposite way without sitting.
No, I don't think so.
I thought, I thought that was the reason that they had the LiDAR versus the radar.
I think that, that the technology is, when they're driving, they don't have to be parked. They can be driving the opposite way and get your speed coming at you. I thought those are how, I mean, I can't tell you...
I think the LiDAR gun is the one that, that can actually, they can, they can have on all the time.
Yeah, and that, and that you don't have to be sitting still, whereas a radar gun, right, which is why they want the LiDAR.
Right.
Right.
I'm just saying, because I got, I got a ticket one time, I go, I tell you right now, I wasn't doing what he said he was doing, and the judge was a jerk. He didn't tell me how fast you were going.
Twenty-five.
I wasn't going, I wasn't doing 57, but he said all you had to do was tell me that you were doing 35 and 35.
Good, good tip for future reference.
Right, so, but...
Having a LiDAR addresses that.
Yeah, having a LiDAR addresses that.
Whether they're sitting or moving.
Correct.
And it's not to be used to anyone else.
That's why the village wants to own it.
That would be the stipulation.
It cannot go to, it has to be, there has to be a, an asset tag on it that says property of Village of Marvin.
Because here's what I don't want to see happen, is this, this car now that has the LiDAR, and all of a sudden, he's policing over in Weddington, and, you know, we're, you know...
No, it's like, I don't, I mean, it's like, it's like, I don't think it's...
Is it mounted in the car?
No, Christina, girl, unmute yourself, oh my lord. Christina. Bueller, bueller.
What's the question?
Um, is this mounted in the car all the time, or is it something that can be easily removed?
You can remove it.
And it, and it will live in Village Hall unless it is in either Tommy's or Mason's car? Yep. And, and the Sheriff's Department has approved that the village will own it.
All right.
Okay.
As long as it's got an asset tag on it, I'm okay with it. Because it can never be, it can never be drift off into Monroe somewhere.
Yep. Okay. So there's a motion on the table.
Further discussion?
I've got it written down.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, if you can hear us.
We heard it. Thanks, Bob!
All right.
Bobby.
Next up, we have consider call for a public hearing to be held on September 8, 2026, 30:00 p.m. for conditional use permit application number 20-12478, 8300 Woodrun Drive, pull in the rear yard that abuts to a side guard as required by State Statute 151.04, oh, 054E3.
So moved.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the heads up.
Thank you.
And next up, we have a discussion of annexation plan update.
Uh, okay, I'll give this one verbally. We have found someone who lives in Marvin that does kind of website design, and he is willing to help us with the annexation package, all the components of it.
What about for the renderings, too?
Uh, no, he doesn't do that. I asked him.
All right, well, that's good, that...
He volunteered, or...
Huh? No, no, I told him about the other project, and he said he doesn't do that.
Okay.
But he does, he does design, like, like graphic design kind of stuff.
Cool, okay.
So we're pretty much just about to, you know, sign on with him. He is asking for 550, and he's going to do everything, like, he's going to do posters, the booklet, and, what was the other thing? Posters, booklet, yeah.
Like the big, like, posters, awesome.
Yeah, and the letter, too, and the, and the, like, the overall present, the package that we would mail people, and, yeah.
Nice, okay, cool.
We'll still have to print, so that, that cost doesn't include...
They'll have the cost, yeah, but this is like, yeah, to make it, make it fancy.
Yeah, yeah, to make it fancy, it'll definitely, it'll definitely give us a lot of value for the money.
Yes, good job, that's awesome. And you moved all of our numbers around?
You mean, oh, yeah, 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 I did that, I did that.
So...
Cool.
So the annex, annexation plan update is basically, we have someone that's going to help us?
Yeah, we have someone that's going to do it, and next time, maybe next work session will happen to us.
And who is this person, do we...
Yeah, his name is Brendan Lutz, I think.
He's a, he's a resident?
A resident in, in Weddington Chase.
So obviously, it'll come to us, and we...
Yeah, hopefully, we'll have it by September 8, and then we can get it on the big boards for the Town Hall.
Oh, yeah, he said it would only take him about three to five days. So as soon as we are, you know, finalize with him, it should be able to have...
So let's push, so that we can approve it on the 8, and then we'll have it for the 15, like, the big boards.
Yeah, yeah, the Town Hall, right.
Yeah, for Town Hall, the Town Hall, I think, not for the Town Hall.
Christina, have you heard that? Okay, I'll make a note.
Yeah, Jamie. You own...
It's not in the packet? Or isn't it?
Yeah, there's nothing, there's nothing in the packet about it, because we were just, we were just arranging it this week, so I didn't have time to put it in the packet for last week.
We put a, how we got this guy, we basically put out feelers to anyone who can help us with...
His wife saw it on Nextdoor and told him, hey, would you be interested in this? And he said, yeah, so...
That's awesome.
That's how, that's how we got it.
Why are you for...
No, 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 I'm just, you always want to know who we're dealing with and stuff, and you were, I just want to know how we got to, got to him and how...
Because we put out ads for graphic designers for...
Right, on Nextdoor and the email list, et cetera, and then...
Of that and the renderings.
Right, correct. Haven't gotten any responses from that, though.
Yeah.
But, yeah, that's how, that's how we got together.
You good?
Good. All right. Anything else on that?
Um, no.
All right. Next up, we have discussion of parks and greenways funding options.
Okay, so this is, this was requested a little while ago, took me a minute, but essentially, we have a couple of things going on at the same time. One is that the Destination by Design gave us a table of grants that we have accessible, and we can find more grants, but then the ask is, you know, some of these, you know, the grants take 40 to 150 hours, essentially, depending on the requirements of the grant. And one time, we did a grant, we didn't get it, but we did a grant, and we split the time that was required between myself, Christina, Derek, and Mary Seif. So that 40 hours doesn't have to come from one, one person, but some direction on, you know, how aggressive we should pursue grants, given that it does take a lot of time to apply for one grant. And then the other thing that's going on in this agenda item is that we have two levels of support from the federal level and the regional level, where, again, and I mentioned this, I think I mentioned this at coffee with council, so the CRTPO is willing to fund the, well, not the whole thing, but is willing to co-share the Marvin Loop and the sections in red on the map the two pages later. If we build the Village Center, because that's a regional project that they would love to contribute pedestrian connections to. So that said, I did submit this map to them, and they said, well, you have to be more sure that you're doing the Village Center before we give you money, but they'd be willing to fund in the, you know, in the, in the region of a million dollars for the sections in red and maybe a little more, this is just what I asked for. And then the other map is the Federal Aid Network map, which, which, these are the roads that the federal government would be willing to contribute to improvements, and, you know, all, all types of improvements, whether it's vehicular, pedestrian, but if we want to build out part of the, parts of the Greenway Plan that are on these roads, the ones in purple, we could ask for federal grants, and the county would also help us with that.
So, okay, so the Federal Aid Network and the CRTPO, these two maps, do we have to apply for it the same way we apply for a grant? Or do we just come in...
Yes, but the county will help us apply for both of those things.
The county will help, okay, for both, but the county's not going to help us until we're ready to do the downtown area? Or the county will help us do the federal one, because the federal one's not requiring us to do the downtown?
That's exactly right.
So why, so should we go ahead and have the county help us with the federal one? Like, because we don't have to be actively working on the Heritage District?
Right.
So we can go ahead and start working on that one, and then as soon as, like, the Heritage District is like, continue, like, once we're like, really have got some legs to it, then we can go to CRTPO and say, hey, here's what the federal folks have said, this is what they're going to help us with, how about you pick up the rest of it?
Yeah, that, that could do, the, the CRTPO requires a local match of 20% for whatever they give us, so...
CRTPO requires a 20%, okay, that's fine, what about...
The federal also requires a match.
How much?
I think that was 20% also, but I have a check.
So, okay, so my thing is, when I'm looking at, I mean, I love this, I think, you know, if we can get money and help, then that's amazing.
That's how we make it happen.
And we should absolutely do that. Some of the ones over here, like, 50% match of 500,000, like, that's a lot, like, that's, I mean, we know, like, what that number is. I mean, again, the CRTPO one and the Federal Aid Network one, those two, I feel, those feel a lot more doable, realistic, right now, and we can always use, we can always use powell funds for that, right, Christina? Sidewalks and stuff?
Yes, we could use that.
Okay. So if we have to, we can always, you know, tap into that, if it comes down to that we don't have the 20% to match, like, whatever they're going to, they're willing to do. But I would ask, these, these are the two that I would start with first, and I mean, maybe like the bike one, you know, 10,000 is a 50%, like, that's kind of cool, like...
And that would probably require less work.
Right. Obviously, the 500,000 one, I think is going to be crazy, like, that's probably going to take you closer to like the 150-hour mark, and maybe even the water resource one, but maybe like, maybe not the regional trails one. And, you know, again, I think if you guys kind of split up the work, see what PRG is I think if you guys kinda split up the work, see what PRG is willing to help with, um, what staff can do. But I, I think these two are, are like a great starting point, especially because they're kind of in areas that we haven't really, like, thought to expand to yet.
So you can use Powellville funds for, for sidewalks, like to a certain perimeter, like if they're joining like a DOT grid or something like that, then, um, or, you know, a public grid, then, then we can do it, but they, like, for the Greenway Grant, since there's, there's some restrictions to that, so.
Okay, but like these.
Some degree.
But these sidewalks that we're talking about, that's gonna be right on the DOT grids.
Yeah.
Okay, cool, that's awesome. That's what I would start with if you're asking my, if you want my opinion, and if you don't, I'm gonna give it to you anyway, so.
That's really good direction, thank you.
Your opinion?
It's free to you, free to me.
It's a package deal.
Yep.
Any other comments?
Um.
Do you want any other direction from us or information?
That's good, starting with the federal grant is a good direction.
I think, I think that's, that's where I would start.
Yeah.
I think Andy County helps you do it.
All right.
Maybe it's Emma that helps you do it.
Moving forward.
It'll probably be Bjorn.
Oh.
Before we move forward, will we be able to talk about this within three, four minutes?
Yeah, let's get the streetlight done, we've got three minutes, right?
So, streetlights policy.
Yeah, cool, so turns out we already have a streetlight policy, it was adopted in two thousand and two.
Awesome.
And, uh, we, uh, entered an agreement with Union Power to, um, rent the electricity, like the, the pole and the electricity, and there are some costs associated with that, uh, there are five different, uh, lamps that we did approve at the time and the cost for each are in there, there's probably a little more now, but this is an adopted policy.
Okay.
And I just happened to find it, um, on the shelf there, um, one day I was just zoning out in that direction, I was like, oh, look at that. We have a policy, yep, it's up there, anyway.
I love it.
So it has, right now, they have, um, five different choices of, of looks?
Uh, I think the number is five, yeah, so there's, there's, uh, depend, and it also depends on the type of roadway, uh, too, there's some that are more appropriate for, uh, residential, some that are actually once in time more appropriate for parking lot, but the point is that we have an adopted policy already for, uh.
So, so my assumption is that, you know, we wanna move forward on this fairly quickly, cause it's an issue right now with the lighting in that area? However, given that it's rented, in this policy, do we have the opportunity to say, say, say we decide on a motif or whatever, what our towns are gonna look like and what it looks like, can we have those changed, that black lamps?
It appears that there's, in the ornamental section, there's a little bit of leeway on that, yeah.
There's some pretty ornamental ones, that one's nice.
But those would probably only be appropriate for residential, uh, roads, the thoroughfares.
But like, what about the thoroughfares, like, like here, like cute little streetlights, like, you know? Like when we do the Heritage District?
Something like that, you know?
Ooh.
On the streetlights, we have to confer with NCDOT too, uh, on the.
So you may be limited on.
Yeah, exactly.
But what about like just decor- what, okay, not streetlights, but what, no, what about like walking lights, like on by the sidewalk? We could have cute little like these guys.
Yes, I could see how we could do both.
There you go.
Like one pedestrian scale and one vehicular scale, yes.
There you go, that's what I'm, that's what I'm talking about, yeah, that one, I like that one, yeah. So what do you need from us for this policy?
Um, to.
You're just telling us that we have one?
Yeah, we actually have a policy and maybe to, uh, just append to it at, at a later meeting perhaps, the, uh, the prioritization that we talked about, because that's not in here.
Okay, so let's do that, and if you, if you think that that's needed, then do that.
So, would a prioritization is be, is cover the two roundabouts that put the lights around there?
That's an existing project.
Yeah, I think you're talking about like.
Like the, a future plan to prioritize thoroughfares and intersections only and residential intersections. That was, uh, whatever we came up with a meeting or two ago.
Yeah. Yeah, I remember that.
So, um, what's the action?
To, uh.
Roman's gonna work on cleaning that up.
Yeah, to work on a policy that combines our existing ordinance with the prioritization that we came up with a meeting or two ago.
Yeah, whatever that was, yeah, cause we, cause we had talked about like intersections and thoroughfares and all that stuff.
It's ready.
Um, so we had, we had definitely taken thoroughfares off of there, so.
Yeah, just leaving the intersection.
Yeah, now, does this policy say anything, cause I know we had talked about, you know, since Union Power was piddle diddling around with our, with giving us the power or giving us the, whatever they were doing, you know?
The approachment agreement?
Whatever.
I mean, they are making progress on that.
Oh, they are, okay, alright, cause you know I was gonna ask you about that.
Yeah, 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 they've.
For the roundabout?
They, yeah, they've, they've, they've made.
So they just put a meter on those and then would they just tell us what?
I think it's a, it seems to be a monthly rate.
They got like this.
Well, no, 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 this is.
They use.
Install meters somewhere.
And lubens.
I just don't want it to look. I, I wish we had choices on what they look.
It's gonna be one of those arms, it's just gonna be. So do you need a, you're good, Roman?
Yeah, I'm good.
Okay, so we need a motion to take a recess for lunch real quick. Bob, that doesn't mean you go far, that means you go get your, go get your food, come back to your desk, we're gonna keep working, yeah, we're gonna keep working.
Motion, some motion to take a five minute recess?
Yeah, five minutes to go get food.
Hang on, hang on, hang on, hang on, real quick, I have Jacqueline on standby, if y'all wanna do the close session, it'll only take five, ten minutes.
Wait, we're doing that what?
No, I, no.
Um.
No, I wanna do it when we get here.
Okay, alright.
Yeah.
Cause, cause Joe's got something else that we need to talk about, so.
Yeah, it falls in that closed session.
Yeah, so now.
Okay.
Alright, motion on the table.
So further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Bob, don't go far, go get your lunch.
Okay, wants to run it over?
Christina, you got it ready?
It probably won't be till the end of September.
My wife had to make an appointment to get a number she needed.
Oh, I had to, I had to go for.
She was just accepted to a new board, um, for Hummel, it's electrical, electric components, so she's on a new board now, she needed something now. If I can just announce it, then.
I had to go get something to do for the ABC Board for Publix.
And?
Had to go pay for it.
I know.
We are recording, by the way.
That's fine, okay, you guys ready, Bob?
If you under receive a kind of watch then.
I did, I gave it to Nancy.
I'm good.
I don't know, maybe they do.
Okay, you guys ready?
Um, did you all get lunch?
Huh?
Do you, are you having lunch?
Done with lunch.
Okay, sorry, okay, I can see it, all right.
Should've got a side.
Ooh, that's hot.
That went way too quick. All right, I'd like to reconvene the, uh, Village Council, August twenty-seventh meeting. Um, it is twelve, twelve in the afternoon. Um, next up we had, uh, discussion of full bond release and road acceptance for all subdivision roads in the courtyards at Marvin.
Okay, so there, uh, they've been done, EFCON has been done with, uh, courtyards for a while, um, but, uh, and so now they're, they're requesting their full bond release. There's an issue that did come up though, between the time that I wrote this memo and now, which is that, uh, we're still, uh, working to see if they've screened the berm properly between Providence Road and the neighborhood. Um, so I guess, uh, the direction then I'm, I'm seeking here is, um, to, to, uh, have a partial bond release that would be minus the cost of the trees that they need to plant if that turns out to be not properly screened after all.
Do you know how much that cost would be?
I still need to know, I need to know how much, uh, for the trees.
That I'm not ready to release it.
Okay, can we table this?
Table it until the September eighth meeting.
Okay.
But I did have a question about this phase three, do they have to put up additional bond money at that time in order to build?
At that time, they will create a brand new bond, our engineer will again certify how much, uh, in, the infrastructure for those remaining six houses would cost.
So you're all tabling that?
Mm-hmm.
That's fine.
I mean, if we don't know how much it's gonna cost, we don't know how much to hold back, so.
That's fine, could you make that a motion, please?
Mm-hmm, so, I'd like to make a motion to move the discussion of full bond release and road acceptance.
So moved.
For all subdivision roads in the courtyard at Marvin until the September eighth meeting.
Cue Robert.
Go Bob.
So moved.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Is it until the September eighth meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Motion passes unanimously. Next up we have discussion, consideration of Village Senator District Strategic Plan Committee applications.
All right, all right, good job, people.
So originally had advertised with seven spots, it came up at the Coffee with Council again that it may be worthwhile to have even more if, if, if more people apply, but currently we have five applications, um, and one of them was in the packet and the four received between now and then were handed out, uh, separately and, uh.
The sixth application was just received to my email, it's Mike LaBelle from Planning Board, you'll get his application later today.
Okay.
Yeah, so in the, uh, in the case of the remaining people that, uh, Mike LaBelle and the remaining people expect to apply, um, they'll be considered at a later meeting, but for now, um, you could consider, um, the people whose applications are in front of you.
Okay, do we, do you want a motion to appoint them now, or do you want to put them on the, um, work session, I mean, on the consent agenda?
Um, since, uh, I don't expect to have the meeting, uh, until October, the first meeting, it's, it's up to you.
Normally you have been, lately you have been appointing people at the work session, but, but it is up to you.
I'm, I'm good with appointing all five of these people. I've got, I've got no problems, and who else are you expecting to apply?
Um.
Do you wanna tell us?
I'd rather wait until they apply.
Sure.
Just in case they don't.
Okay.
But they spoke to you?
Yeah, they spoke to me with interest in applying, yeah.
So, are we approving any of these today? Are we, is the, is the council ready to approve?
I am.
All right, so you wanna go?
I'll do it.
Make a motion on each individual one?
I'm just gonna do all five. I'd like to make a motion to appoint Melinda Daniel, Dorota Clegg, TJ Filbert, John Jones, and Tim Fincher to the Village Center Strategic Plan Committee.
And do you wanna include Michael or?
No, no, we'll print out the page and note it. We'll do that.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The motion passes unanimously.
There you go, you got five peeps so far, Roman.
That's great, it's gonna be a good team, I'm really looking forward to it.
Um.
I'd be good to say they all stink.
Next up is discussion of advisory board vacancies.
Okay, one second, let's see. All right, so this will be, this will be quick. So basically, um, you have before you a table that shows the status of each board and committee. Uh, the website committee has one vacancy, we haven't been advertising just because they're about to finish up their work within the next month. Uh, you have two vacant, two vacancies on the Board of Adjustments, they're both alternates. Two vacancies on the Parks, Recreation and Greenways Board, one of which, uh, you, one of which, uh, may be filled today, cause we have an application in your packet. Um, so yeah, we are advertising. They have, since we started advertising on social media and, and through email, we've been getting more applications and hopefully we can get these last few positions filled, maybe within the next two months, just depending. That's all I, that's all I have for this item.
So we're continuing to put these out on our.
Yep, they get advertised every week.
So, um, just a thought, as we're filling these vacancies and stuff, maybe when we put out the next blurb, and I thought about this as I was, and I wasn't thinking about her in particular, but I was having lunch with my wife and daughter yesterday and thinking, boy, we really don't have anybody represented, someone younger. And I thought about that and I thought, wow, what an opportunity, especially given the circumstances with a lot of people staying at home. Maybe some sort of blurb out there to push for, um, someone who's off to college. What would they like to see, someone, a younger generation, um, because I think they'll have the time, especially if they're doing everything online and they're not physically at their college right now. And I just, we, we were talking about all that sort of thing, there may be opportunities for someone to reach out or we, in the blurb, and maybe we can say it before the blurb, but it, it does relate to the applications, that, um, somehow we, there's a way to appeal to that younger generation, so we're looking forward, like, what is it that they'd like to see or what was, where they've been or what they see as missing and stuff, you, you never know what you, you get and it'd be nice to have that voice on there. Especially for the strategic committee.
I will say it is much harder to get younger people involved, but we definitely can make that effort.
Okay, just a thought, and a great way to put it on their resume.
Yeah, it's good volunteer experience, yeah.
It's a volunteer experience and, I mean, that's, we're telling our daughter right now, anything you can do, she's helping out with the Marvin Ridge Band while she can and that's another thing for putting on your, uh, things, so I encourage, you know, any students that are at home.
At least a voting age?
Yeah.
Yeah, before I, before I came on here as an intern, I tried, I tried doing that.
I don't know, that's pretty mature, fifteen.
I, you know what, like, my fifteen year old is very mature, too mature, so.
So are we all good on that, trying to reach out to younger people?
Yep, something, or, or a call out, you know, something specifically, a call out to those who find themselves at home and, you know, during, because we wanna be, it has to be over eighteen years. Anyway, um, anything else on that, Austin?
That's all I have.
All right, moving on, considering, next up twenty-one, consideration of appointment of applicants to Parks, Recreation and Greenways Board for term expiring nine, one, twenty, twenty-one.
Mm-hmm, yeah, you'll have, if you appoint, uh, Dan Wilson, you'll have to reappoint him again next year once that term expires. His application is in your packet, I don't know if you've each had a chance to speak with Mr. Wilson?
Roman, this was a, this was a recommendation from somebody already on PRG, right?
What, what recommendation?
Wasn't he, like a referral, like somebody?
I'm not aware of that.
Uh, I don't remember. Oh, I think Bob was saying, oh yeah, I'm trying to get someone.
That's what I was thinking.
Bob, do you know, uh, Dan, not that Bob, oh, Bob knows him, yeah.
Never mind, never mind.
Yeah, I, I actually, this is ringing a bell, now that I see the address.
Yeah, I did not reach out to him personally, so I have not had any conversation with him, but it sounds like his application is.
And he got it all into me so fast.
And it's tight, I'm impressed on that. I suppose, application could, if he's a business owner and's an engineer. Um, does anyone have any questions, concerns, or do we wanna make an appointment?
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Daniel Wilson to the Parks, Recreation and Greenway Board, uh, for the term expiring nine, one, twenty-one.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Congrats to Mr. Wilson.
Yes. Next up, twenty-two, discussion of cellular planning.
Okay.
Here's mine.
Just throw it at me, okay?
Don't, don't pay attention to what you're doing, Christina.
We're, we're coming for your phone, Bob, I'm, I'm.
Oh, I'm at it for my cold, wet hands.
Uh, just a quick update, um, we looked into seeing if Windstream offered cellular service, they do not. Uh, Julie has been speaking with, uh, people at AT&amp;T to see about getting our bill reduced. We're about to own all the phones, so our bill will reduce from that, uh. Don't have too much information on any specifics as far as the, the price that, where our new price will be, uh, but Julie is having ongoing conversations and we hope to have more information soon.
So we don't know if we turn in half of our phones, it's gonna go down.
Yeah, it's gonna depend on which, it actually depends on which lines we get rid of, so it's.
The last we had checked, it, it was gonna say maybe June or about tomorrow, um, that was, I think for three pounds maybe. But Julie's still taking into it.
All right, we'll let us know.
Yeah, we'll keep y'all updated.
All right. Next up, discussion, consideration of revisions to Policy P dash two oh one seven dash one oh dash one oh. Village Council Meeting Minutes, Procedures and Adopted Protocol.
Okay, this is my big ticket item for the day.
Let's see, was that redundancies?
Yeah, some redundancies, some, uh, contradictions. So basically, this revision, this policy revision is focused on two main changes. Uh, so your current policy states that in qua- in quasi digital hearings, their, the minutes are always verbatim. Your rules of procedure say by request, they're verbatim, the school of government says they should be by request, um.
I think they should absolutely be by request, cause that's gonna be crazy for you to do, people can go listen to the recording.
And if we ever did need a verbatim transcript for, let's say, a lawsuit or proceeding, we can always make it. Uh, fun fact, the last public hearing took me six hours, so. It's up to you what you wanna do, the second thing, the second revision, uh, states that, the current policy states that we will have two copies of the minutes for each meeting, one with audio, um, one with, uh, timestamps, one without. I have not seen any evidence that we've practiced this in years and it refers to a policy, a, a recommendation by the Department of Cultural Resources. I can no longer find said recommendations, I don't know if that. I can no longer find said recommendations, I don't know if that was just something that's outdated, but regardless, they're your minutes, and it's up to you to decide.
I mean, I think we have been trying to timestamp them.
Mm-hmm.
But I don't, but I don't know that it's...
I, I guess, is it, is it that difficult that, as we're going through the minutes?
The timestamps are fine.
Okay.
Yeah, the timestamps, I just, I just want to be consistent, so, the, the policy says that I would keep two sets of minutes. Do we should, it's up to you, but I, it's more efficient and it's more consistent with current practice, we just keep one set of minutes with the timestamps.
Okay.
That's my recommendation.
And then the other one is quasi-judicial, verbatim only by request, or... Yeah, really by request, I don't think we need to have, because that's crazy.
And we used to have a policy that, and maybe we've changed it, that if somebody wanted verbatim minutes...
We still have that.
The, the, a council member...
We saw that.
That is the...
They have to provide it themselves?
Yeah. That's what our policy says now.
For the, then for the clerk to confirm and check that it's correct.
That is the current, that is the rest of the policy, and that, that part reminds us of...
So what should happen is if Jamie wanted verbatim, Jamie has to produce verbatim, submit them to you, and just, we just want to get this straight. Submit them to you, and then you basically have to sit there and read verbatim, make sure every word is word for word, and these words.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, yes.
So it's still taking time, it definitely takes the time of the council, but it's still taking time for you to confirm.
It's a very, it's a very time-consuming process.
Whoever wants it has a...
Has to type it up, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So if you can change to, um...
And you have a draft policy of the revisions underneath.
Alright, perfect, so then just put this on, I would just make a motion to put all the changes, um, for the meeting minutes, procedures, and adopted protocol on the consent agenda for September eight.
We don't need a motion for that.
We just made a motion.
Alright, what do we have now?
I just made a motion.
Oh, I, I said, we don't have a motion, you're...
No, I said I made a motion.
Oh, one thing, I just...
Do you not want a motion for that?
I was, I was gonna ask, do we need a motion, I thought you said no.
No, I said I made a motion.
Is the public hearing before the consent agenda at the next meeting?
It usually is.
Public what? Comment?
If the public hearings before the consent agenda, then ones at the next meeting will need to be verbatim as well.
Well, we can make it, you can just make it so that the public hearing is after the consent agenda, if you want, if you want a good direction.
Or, I mean, I, I mean, I can approve this now, I just...
It's up to you what you want to do.
Do you guys want to just approve it now?
Sure.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the revisions to Policy P dash two-zero-one-seven-dash-one-zero-dash-one-zero, Village Council meeting minutes, procedures, and adopted protocol. Mueller.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Moving on, next up we have review of council minutes from the five-twelve-twenty regular meeting, five-twenty-eight-twenty special meeting, the six-eleven-twenty joint with PRG meeting, seven-fourteen-twenty regular meeting, seven-thirty-twenty work session meeting, and eight-eleven-twenty regular meeting.
Do you have the minutes, uh, also though, Austin?
I do not.
Okay, um, that's fine, I can do that right now, let's see.
We'll start with, uh...
Five-twelve?
Five-twelve meetings.
Just another quick update, we are almost through the backlog.
I know, I was like, we're getting close.
There are two sets of minutes left, one has already been drafted, one is halfway through.
Good job.
Nice job.
I'll have this.
Really nice. And once you're caught up, then you maybe...
Oh, I'm fine, I'm fine, I did, that's what Fridays are for, Fridays are a minute day.
Still gotta be, uh...
Because nobody wants to...
Monotonous. Same thing over and over again, it's gonna be changed.
Bob, do you see the screen?
Yes, I sure do.
Okay, that's awesome. Go ahead and get started then.
This one is just the one with the correction, right?
The five, the five-twelve is just the public comment.
It's just that public comment.
And I've tried to go through and make the, make the spelling, uh, the spelling corrections since Mr. Jones read it into the, read it directly into the record.
So, so I'll just move forward and say, as long as that correction was made and confirmed that, that we can, uh, motion to approve the five-twelve, because that was pulled from the last meeting. Five-twelve-twenty-twenty, regular meeting revised.
You want to put it on the consent agenda, go for it, because that's what we've been doing.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Motion to put that on the consent agenda.
Sure.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the next one, next one, uh, whoever's pulling it up is pulling up the May twenty-eighth.
Uh, special, or special?
Yeah, it's all consent.
Special.
Special, Row Hit, it's special.
Okay, here it is.
It's special, it's special. Oh, this is the, she's, you, okay, Austin, I, and now, because this wasn't quasi-judicial, was it?
Which one?
The special meeting with the interviews?
That was not, that was not, uh, quasi-judicial, and that is not verbatim, that is...
Going forward, I would just say interview, blah, 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 I, this is, you will never be on this one.
The reason I did, there was a specific reason I did that.
Okay.
Just because this dealt with the appointment to a council seat, I thought it was fair to the record to provide more detail than normally would be provided.
Alright, I just had to read it also.
But you, you already lived it once.
I know, I didn't want to relive the, you know, there's some decentness that I'm...
What'd you say?
The good, uh, I mean, that, you know...
No, it's great.
Thank you.
It's great, I didn't have any changes.
Thank you for pulling that up, Row Hit.
We're on, um, five-twenty-eight.
Special meeting?
Yeah, special meeting, I, I do not want to mention any of it.
I, yeah, I'm just talking to you. So, does anybody want to make a motion to add that one, with no changes?
Yep, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, put the five-twenty-eight-twenty special meeting minutes as presented on the consent agenda for September eighth.
Further discussion?
Whoop.
Whoop, whoop, whoop.
Whoop, 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 whoop.
Oh, yeah, yeah, good hit.
Yeah, good, good, oops, okay.
Okay. Further discussion, all's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Um, next up we have six-eleven, um, joint with PRNG. It's on June eleventh.
How did, how many changes did this come here? You got all those people's names spelled right?
That is, yeah, I think Barbie wrote these minutes, she got the spelling from Bob Nunn again.
Okay, perfect.
Alright. Further motion?
I'd like to make a motion to put the June eleventh-twenty joint with PR, PRNG meeting minutes as presented on the consent agenda for the September eighth meeting.
All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes. Um, next up we have July fourteenth, regular meeting, virtual.
Spiritual?
Spiritual.
We were on virtual?
Said virtual.
Yeah, I didn't think it was all virtual, was it?
No, it's, it's just Barbie wrote that on there, but... I think it's just because, uh, Councilman Mark Laces was participating virtually, and we offered that option.
Yeah, so it's up here, part of the virtually.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if I can do this one either.
Think I'm doing pretty good then.
Keep telling yourself that, Austin, let's see.
Oh, and you should see how my, you should see how big my ego can get, yeah.
We'll see, let's wait.
You'll get me sometime.
Joe, I can't really do throwing trash on the floor, it's so rude.
Speak for yourself, I ain't doing that.
No, that's the guy.
You're hiding the candy over there, you need to bring that in.
Please, take the candy, I don't need any more of it.
What are you, what are you, what are you getting out of there? I like these three good bars, I like those, too.
You stay in your setting, it's over.
I don't have any changes for this meeting.
It's July fourteenth?
Yeah. Anybody got any changes for the fourteenth? Okay, I'd like to make a motion, Bobby Good, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm good.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion to put the seven-fourteen-twenty regular meeting minutes on the consent agenda on the September eighth meeting, agenda, whatever.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
To the July fourteenth?
Alright, next up we have, uh...
The July eight, I mean, yeah, oh.
Seven-thirty-twenty work session.
Seven what?
Seven-thirty, um, two thousand twenty work session, meeting.
You got your changes on that one? Christina's probably like painting her nails or something, like, she's not even paying attention anymore. See, she doesn't even come off mute, just like, be like, oh no, I'm paying attention, I'm here. See, she's even...
Everybody, Christina.
She's not even paying attention.
I'm your daughter.
Are you taking a nap? Does that make you up? See, she's not listening, that wasn't even her, I thought that was her daughter. I thought it was her daughter, be like, Mom, here, kiss me, don't you worry. See, she's not...
She's like a Ferris Mueller where it has an automatic...
If she's like, if she's like me working at home, I'm doing five different arms all three spots.
Yeah, I agree.
Alright, I'd like to make a motion...
I hear y'all.
There is a gun.
Yep.
It takes me a second to unfuse myself.
See, she just, she, she just showed back up, her daughter was like, Mom, they're talking about you, you need to go in there and say something.
Just hit the Ferris Mueller button.
Yeah. Alright, I'd like to make a motion to put the seven-thirty-twenty work session meeting minutes on the consent agenda on the September eighth agenda.
Further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Uh, next up we have eight-eleven, regular meeting minutes.
Alright, this was long.
Here's your verbatim.
I love, I love Row Hit stuff. Okay, great, oh, sure.
I know, I read that too.
Amazing.
Is that what I really saw?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, you've got a lot of alright, oh, sure. Alright.
Lot of inaudible.
Wow.
Not, not you, it's, that was, the inaudible is the cross talk.
God, this is so long.
I love one of the things that can't, oh, what, it said, uh...
Was it me?
Councilman Vandenberg said, oh, Austin said, uh, something, and you were like, I can't hear you, and it said, Austin, louder, same thing.
Yeah, you could, I lo, I read, when I was writing that, I was, every time I read that, I read in your voice, it's funny.
You read it in my voice?
Mm-hmm.
Where is that?
I remember it being at the top.
It's at the, towards the very beginning, because where I'm swearing in people.
Hmm, and it said like the top of the page.
Austin, louder.
Is that what it said? Oh, there it is. Say that louder, I can't hear a thing. Mr. Yow, louder. Was I not there?
I thought I couldn't hear anything. You, I think you were, you were virtual. Any changes on this one?
I didn't see.
Oh, I said something inaudible over here.
The way I did inaudible was, if I, if I listened to it five times and I still can't make it out, I move on.
No, it's fine. Hold on, let's smoke. Nope, I'm good. Alright.
My comments, I changed yep to yes, apparently I said yep.
You said yep.
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 It's verbatim.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the, or to put the eight-eleven-twenty regular meeting minutes as presented on the consent agenda on the eighth, September eighth agenda.
You're good.
I know, but why do I, I mean, I have a hard time with that.
We're, we're already twenty-four items in, you're stressed.
All's in fa, um, further discussion? All's in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion passes.
Good job, everybody.
That's a straight ticket of no revisions.
Okay, next up we have discussion of town hall meeting, ideas, and agenda.
No breaks for you, buddy.
I really enjoyed that one.
Joe.
What?
No breaks for you, buddy.
Who said that?
Me, to you.
I didn't even get him, well.
You don't have your, your light up, your lighting for you?
Row Hit, can you pull up the draft, the draft agenda for, um...
Good times.
For this, uh, town hall meeting?
It's a waste of time.
Austin, I've already got it printed, it's by there.
Oh, yeah, everyone has it, I'll, I'll put it up anyway. Is it just Senator Clerk's agenda that's here up?
Well, see, now, why have you been joining us, we miss you.
Twenty-twenty, go to special meeting notices, and look, pick the date, there you go.
She's five years old all today.
And this, this is just for y'all to say, what do you want to be on the agenda here?
Okay. Alright.
And Row Hit, you can add directly to this, if you'd like.
Uh, sure, thanks. Um, Jean Stowe did request to have the first, like, slot, if you're gonna give them slots. Um, so like six-thirty to, I don't know, maybe seven-thirty or something.
Oh, no, no, he does not need that hour.
Seven o'clock, six-thirty, seven o'clock.
Like, he gets like fifteen minutes.
Well, maybe fifteen minutes present, fifteen minutes, so six-thirty, seven?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah. And he doesn't have to fill up the whole time, like, if people don't have...
Yeah, if people weren't there, if people didn't come, that's fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So I would, yeah, so I would do that. Alright, so, yes, okay, so we've got the master plan, and this is PR, PRNG master plan?
Uh, yes, it's a newly adopted master plan, so it's here.
So we'll do PRNG, and so who's gonna present that, you or Row Hit?
Uh, I suppose so, yeah.
Okay.
Is that gonna be at the seven to, seven-thirty slot or something?
I would, no, I would, no, I would like ten minutes. Like, people, people are gonna start lazing over at some point, like, they're gonna, like, we need to, that's why I'm not even sure I'd do six-thirty to six, seven for Jean, I'm thinking like a ten-minute presentation, and like...
I will say this, that people are very interested in his documentary. It was the best performing communication we've had in the village.
Okay.
That I've seen on record.
Okay.
How do you know?
I'm looking at Facebook, Nextdoor, and, uh, MailChimp, um, Analytics. Analytics, I can tell that we reached thousands upon thousands of people that, that we've never reached before, just with that one post.
Alright, well...
So maybe we give him twenty minutes?
Twenty minutes.
But just give him a, let, allow him to plan for what he's gonna say in the twenty-minute slot. Give him a twenty-minute slot and, and be, if he's good at it, which I'm assuming he is very good at it, he should leave us with enough information wanting more.
Correct, and to go get the book. I'd like, and I tell him, if he wants to, he can sell the book.
Talented, bring the books in.
Yes, bring the books, and he can sell them.
He'll sign, sign a copy.
And Row Hit, you'll follow up with, with Jean Stowe about this meeting?
Okay. Okay, um, copies or highlights from the community survey. Row Hit, I would just kind of fold that in to somewhere, maybe the land use plan, um, and then you can do that.
Sure.
So maybe we, so maybe we have like land use plan, and you kind of, yeah. And I think you...
Uh, that, uh, the planning board did recommend to have the, uh, public input for the land... the, uh, public input for the land use plan to be as part of the town hall. Um, I gave them the three options, like the dates, like to have it as a different day or to have it on this day. And they thought this was the best option. Why, you know, in this, especially during this time, why bother having several meetings when you're already doing this?
I think it's a good idea, and I know, I feel like when we had a public input for something here.
About our town?
No, it was, it was when I was, it was when I was running. So it was that long ago, we had it here. And we had staff.
I wasn't allowed to attend?
Yeah, you could, no council where it was allowed to attend, but I showed up, but God, I can't remember what it was for. And like they had, they had, um, like, like signup stuff that you could like make comments or things like that. So I think somewhere like in the back, we need to have like land use plan public input and then have like what was that? What was that?
What was the, what was it?
What was the public input for?
Um, it was for, it, it was for, um, town hall.
Was it for town hall?
Yeah. And I think it was for the, um, they were talking about the looks, the outside, the, you know.
That's what it was. So they had like, so they had like put like paper that people could write down comments and like give so that like, so if, if they couldn't, you know, make their land use plan public input at that point, you know, during that time.
Couldn't they write some things down too?
Yes, that's what I'm saying, like it was like a comment period. So okay, so if we're gonna have the land use plan public input at that meeting that we need to heavily advertise that that will be part of all of the town hall. So that just needs to be like highlighted somehow.
So how do they get access to that to come prepared for questions and stuff?
That's why I'm saying, like when I, when, I literally mean highlighted, but I meant like, we need to have like an email going out that says you know, we're almost finished with our land use plan, we're gonna have a public input meeting at our special town hall meeting that we're gonna have on this day. Like, we need to have it like spelled out for them, that this is your opportunity for public input for the land use plan.
But, but they will be able to get the proposed land use plan on the website.
Okay, yeah, make sure, make sure
Say that one more time.
Most recent land use plan draft.
Needs to be online.
Draft used to be online before
Like soon.
It's gonna be their responsibility.
And we need, and we need to get that information out. I think that should be a separate blurb, like the land use public input meeting will be at the blah, blah, blah. Find, here's the link to it on our website, go see it beforehand, I'm ready to meet.
And the blurb is, the land use plan is now, draft is now available for public view.
Review.
And I have, and I have a template I use for one-off topics that's
And, you know, um, please plan to tend, to attend the September seventeenth meeting for any concerns, questions.
September fifteenth.
Whatever this meeting, concerns, questions or comments, um.
And the town hall meeting will be advertised in every weekly newsletter and there'll be reminders going on constantly.
If you're unable to attend, please submit you know, your concerns in writing and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, and you can listen in, we'll have it set up so that people can listen in to you guys. Like you'll each have a mic and, uh, you'll be picked up by the webex.
Okay, the other thing is I want a specific email going out about the town hall meeting. That if you are unable to attend in person or virtually, please go ahead and submit your questions now. We will address them. So that needs to go out a lot too.
Yeah, can put on the agenda too.
So I, and I have that advertised at every single week.
Okay, good.
What are they charging us? Do we know?
What now?
What are they charging us?
They're, they are not charging us the normal rental fee, we're only paying for cleaning and the sound technician.
That's really nice.
Yeah, they said they were glad to do it since, since it's a community event.
Awesome.
Shout out to them in our word. That's one of my word comments.
I can make that happen.
Hold on, that's one of them or that's the only?
Oh, no.
Oh, good. That's a party, Joe, okay. All right, uh, visuals of any large project councils considering, yes, we need to talk about village hall. We need to pop, okay, who's gonna talk about village hall?
Christina.
Christina. Who's gonna talk about the village center district?
Uh, me, I guess.
What about John?
Oh, we could, I could put both names on it.
Maybe. Just to have somebody else talking. New website features and functions?
Uh, it'll depend on how far we are, but I think we can make that happen.
Okay, good. At least some update that
It, it can be, yeah.
It doesn't have to be long, just, we're working on it, we know.
I'm still thinking, I'm still thinking October, late October launch. There'll be some training after it's completed, of course. And once we finalize this, we'll get you to sign off on the, the meeting. Make the formal announcement.
Greenway trails and plans.
We'll put me and John Berisich on there, but we'll have to find out which one, which one of the board members is able to come.
Okay, good. Um, okay, what are our top, like, what's our top five things that we have going on? Let's just, don't look at that.
You got the referendum questions on there?
I don't know, that's what I'm saying. Let's, let's go top five things, village hall, that's on there.
And didn't you say annexation plan focused?
Yes, annexation plan, village hall, annexation plan, VCD.
Uh, roundabouts? I mean, we've but, but it's more informational and it's where we're at and we have no control over it. It is a state-owned road at this time. Um, we are at the mercy of, of budget that is at the state level.
Okay, so maybe we'll just do like a bullet point list, we can go through like and just hit them real quick.
Exactly.
Um, roundabout, you know, road roundabouts. Stats and maybe even the resurfacing.
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, real quick touching on, you know, our plan that we're slowly taking over, you know, Marvin roads and, uh, you know, it includes signage, I mean, whatever.
Would you want to talk about the landscaping that's coming up for it?
Yeah. Update landscaping.
You're already talking about the roundabout, so.
Yeah. Yeah, we've got landscaping coming up. Um, yeah, everything that we're doing, we've added a, a new deputy. We're super excited to have Tommy Mason on board. Um, we've, we've purchased, um,
Did we ever say anything like survey results type thing?
We've got it on there.
It's already up there.
Survey results is its own.
Community survey.
This may be where we touch on that.
Yeah.
Do I make that fifteen minutes? I don't think that, that doesn't seem
That's not gonna be long enough?
No, I can do thirty. Um, I would say we need, uh, the, well, uh, our deputies. We need our, and the deputies, right?
Can we have them there?
They should probably be there anyway.
I, I know, but make sure they're both in and introduce themselves.
You'll, you'll need to talk about the charter changes.
Yeah, we will. But deputies, um, and then also, hey, we are, we are fully supporting our deputies. We have purchased a LiDAR gun for them that is will belong to the village of Marvin. Like, tell people what we've been doing, like this, like this, this is what this is about. Um, let's do um.
Do we want to bring anything about anything related to COVID or?
No.
I think it's been talked about at this point.
We can't do anything about it.
Um, just what were our precautions?
Do the LiDAR thing under the deputies. Um, I would do, yeah, we definitely want the, um, what did you just say?
Charter, charter changes, referendum.
On the referendum, on the ballot, we need that stuff. Um, we're basically covered plenty more of what they've been doing.
So based on this meeting we're having tomorrow, that's gonna be the village center district, hopefully, will be put in there? If we have any?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
I honestly, like this, okay, this is
That's where if they have any pictures and we are, we come to an agreement and there's some thought about that, I'd really like to get feedback somehow on, you know, what that whole, I mean, cause I was remote, Jamie, you weren't at the meeting, I mean, you were out west, but I was trying to visualize it and I know Rohit, you had some pictures of downtown areas, but I mean, pictures speak volumes for people when they see what our thoughts and ideas are, what, what could happen. And as I, every time I drive by now, I'm pointing out to my kids what, what we could potentially do and where this this road could be and
I think that, I think that'll be helpful once we, once we nail down some stuff tomorrow, but Rohit, that's a good point for tomorrow. If you can come with just some ideas, because again, I'm, I'm a better visual learner than I am like
I would guess that one of the landowners will have some visuals for us.
Yeah, but
Well, if not, you can
They'll have the visuals, but I can also bring examples.
Perfect, I think that's a good idea.
Pictures of existing places.
Yes. I think that's a good idea. Um, okay, so my thought is, and we're gonna, we'll keep working on this, but my thought is, we're gonna have our special meeting next week or tomorrow. We're gonna have a regular meeting on the eighth. I honestly think that we should probably have like a special meeting just right before the town hall to, like
Totally agree.
A special meeting for what?
Does it have to be a special meeting? Can you just put it in the agenda?
Not if we wanna have a meeting before that.
For the council and staff.
For us, we could adjourn the September eighth meeting to a later date right before that meeting, we could always do that.
Yeah.
So wait, what's the purpose of this?
I, I wanna have a meeting, and I don't wanna do it in the regular meeting on the eighth.
Like a dry run?
Kind of. Kind of.
And ensure everything goes smoothly.
Yeah, and, and how are
Opening comments, just
No.
Let everyone know.
God almighty, no, yes.
What's, so what's the, what's the purpose of this, of this dry run?
I'll have to get them approved.
So that we know what we're doing.
Okay.
And so that we know who's saying what, when they're saying it, how it's gonna flow. Cause we can sit here and do this, but we're gonna come up with some other stuff and you guys are gonna be like, oh, we need, that needs to go on there too. And we're gonna be like, eh, do we really need that?
The only bogey we don't know is questions and answer period, where the open-ended questions, like, we're gonna have, probably have a handful of questions that they want answered.
We, we, we are also gonna have an hour before the event formally starts.
Yeah, no, no, we're gonna
Let them know.
And here's the thing, I mean, we, we, and to Kim's point about planning this, okay, so I personally don't wanna be the only one there talking about when someone asks a question.
I, I don't either. I don't want that either. Nobody wants that.
I recognize that, and that's the first part of getting through, understanding your short pause. But, but I want to be able to say, okay, we have a handful of questions going in. Um, Jamie, you take this one. Bob, you take this.
Oh, a hundred percent, especially if you have them beforehand, that was great.
Be prepared, especially if we have the questions, and try and make it as concise and, you know, get to the point as possible.
Is there a date you all are thinking about for this dry run?
Um, no, but let's, let's pick one now. Oh, thirty-eight active cases of COVID at Belmont Abbey College. Yeah. He's gonna come home, so he might as well not spend the money and just sorry. Um, okay, so our meeting's on the eighth. Jamie, you and I have to talk with council next Thursday morning. Our thing's on the fifteenth. What time are we, what time are we starting that?
It's same as a normal meeting, six thirty.
But we need to be there at five thirty, right?
Mm-hmm, that's where we're gonna do the right dry run.
Um.
Dry run.
I meant, that's where we're gonna do the setup, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry.
Shouldn't we just do it the night before, like the fourteenth, the Monday night? Can you guys do Monday?
I can.
Bob, can you do Monday night, the fourteenth?
You'll need to check, we'll need to check with Andy, but.
Yeah, I know that.
What'd you say?
He said that's fine.
That's fine. Now, do you want, do you want, um, I mean, I'm
Six thirty?
Not physically being there, but do you wanna test the, um, um, the, you know, or the, the electronics, the computer and all that kinda stuff to make sure it's virtual, um?
We can do that, Bob.
But, yeah, staff can do that. I just want us to know who's saying what and, and firm up.
That's, that's fine.
I mean, I know we're gonna have to firm up this before, the night before, so we'll have to post it.
We can't do that, we're drawing through at the location, it'd have to be here.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, or maybe we should do it maybe we should do it the Thursday before and then we can post the special meeting if we wanna change anything on the agenda.
Well, the, the formal notice has to go out how long before you?
Yeah. So if we do it on
But we're gonna advertise it before the notice goes out, of course.
Oh, yeah, yeah. But the note, but the notice, I mean. Do you guys wanna do it Monday before and just go with the agenda? We can't add anything, we can only take stuff off. Or do it Thursday and firm up it and then post it.
I'd probably rather do it Thursday.
Thursday, firm it up and then post it.
So that's Thursday, the tenth?
Yeah, I'm not available on that Thursday, that tenth.
So Bob can't do that.
Can we do it during the eleventh, during the day?
I don't have a problem with that.
I
Friday.
Is that September?
Eleven. Terrible day.
I've already got a blurb planned.
That's all right. I don't think it's gonna take us very long. I think it's gonna take us maybe an hour, hour and a half.
I think at most. It will be a public meeting, so public, public can come view y'all.
That's fine.
That'll be the blooper reel.
Nobody comes down.
So we're talking about the eleventh, at what time?
I don't know, can you, can I, can I already do that? I know Bob can, I can.
September
Eleven.
Do y'all just wanna do it two in the afternoon, like we're doing for tomorrow?
No, I'd really go earlier.
Earlier?
Two's like my nap time.
In the morning or something?
Not two in the morning, Bob. I'm not coming in here in the middle of the night. I would think maybe like ten, eleven?
Ten, seven, ten, yeah.
Ten AM?
And this is a special meeting?
Yeah. You good with that, Jamie? You're a man of few words.
I'm just always up, I'm ready in any town.
Okay, all right, I'm good with that.
Ten AM, okay.
Yeah, on the eleventh, that's good.
And the agenda is simply to prepare for the
Leave it super vague, yes. Yeah.
Simply to just prepare for the upcoming meeting at, yeah, I'll figure, I'll put the details in.
Okay.
And what time did you say on that?
Ten.
Ten AM.
Yeah, tomorrow's really must not have a nap time. I get cranky when I'm tired.
Ten AM.
On the eleventh, that's good, and then we can, and then you can go ahead and post.
Cause it'll have to, it'll have to go off that day.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I can get that done in the afternoon.
Yep. Um, yeah, we'll firm this up. I would keep you guys keep going through it, talk, go ahead and talk to whoever we think we need to talk to, like Berisich or uh, John Jones, um, or even tap in and say, hey, John, if you don't wanna talk about that, see if somebody, you know, see if, you know, any of the other here, you know, and, and I would also normally try to confirm with the boards who's gonna be there from Park, Second Greenway and planning board. What do you guys think? Good? I feel like I'm doing all the talking.
Are there any other items that you want to have a slot?
Well, what's our top five? Village Hall, Village Center District, Roads. Safety.
Village Center District, Village Hall doesn't have a slot. Um, I can give it a slot.
Oh, Village Hall needs a slot. Oh, Village Hall needs a slot.
Okay, so, um.
Top five things, Village Hall, Village Center District, Rhodes, Safety, Greenways.
And you're gonna have, you're gonna have people asking. And we're gonna obviously address the referendum.
Yeah, referendum, you use me on there. Did you put it?
As a slot or just a general?
Yeah, I probably will make it a slot.
Yeah, I'd stick it under Village.
And before we have any questions, we just do a little quick presentation. I wanna address things head-on without giving someone else the, like, we're skirting something. I don't wanna skirt anything.
Yeah.
When, when we did our walkthrough at the event, we realized that we probably need a moderator, and one of us can do it. Don't know if you all had preferences on, on who would hold, who would do that?
Not me, I talk too much.
No, I don't think it should be.
It shouldn't be, you wanna be all, we just have member.
Perhaps Christina do it then.
It's fine.
Okay, the moderator is a pretty big job, so if you're being signed up for that, you know, you've got to manage all the questions that are being asked of the council. Um, like, you'll be like, you'll read a question, and then one of the council members will answer that question, you know, like, you, you guys have all seen the panel at some point, right?
So, like, that moderator, that moderator, we, we gotta have some.
I know what you're talking about.
Like, there's, there's people that's.
She's masking with, yeah.
So, um, and, and that's harder to do if she had a mask on, you wouldn't be able to see her big ass smirk.
So easy.
But what more importantly is the moderator is to be.
She wants that potty word. I'm gonna need that verbatim, I'll type that up.
You, you have at it. Um, is decorum in the meeting, um, like round rules for the.
Yeah, that's what the moderator is gonna do.
Right, but we gotta establish that.
And that's something you can work through at that dry run through, like.
Christina, can you be the moderator?
I can.
Do you want to?
Do what?
Do you want to?
Sure.
And there's a.
If not, who else should be it?
And I'll be there generally taking the minutes.
I can do it, it's not, it's not a problem.
Okay, I just feel like you're the administrator, like, you're gonna be able to, you know, do that, so.
Yeah, I can do it, it's what I do.
Okay. I'm gonna show up, come on.
I will show up.
She totally won't show up. No way.
I hope everyone shows up.
No way, she doesn't show up. Um, I would try to get our numbers down where we're presenting from six-thirty to eight-thirty.
Okay.
And then we do a Q and A for an hour.
Okay, I mean, I have eight fifteen, so.
Is there any, um, is there any chance we can incorporate some sort of optional, optional?
Can we do a choreography where we dance and sing a song about Marvin and?
You just lost my train of thought with that. I see you dancing, you dance, girl.
That was my point.
Optional, oh, Bob, you're missing some great video here.
Can he see what's going on?
She can't, she's out of the picture, but she's dancing, I guess, so.
He can see a small square of us in a wild creature.
You can't see me anywhere, I'm a creature.
Maybe, Austin, you know better.
What am I getting volunteered for?
Uh, you're not, yeah, you leave, you get volunteered. It, it would be nice, when we put these announcements out. Is some form of optional RSVP, so we can kinda get a sense of.
Facebook has that feature built in, uh, not all social media platforms do.
Click here if you plan to attend, or some, something that we can get some sort of response. We're gonna have a hundred, we're gonna have fifty, ten.
I think that's a good idea.
I can, I know MailChimp has, has a feature to, where you can click a button, send an email response that could say an RSVP, but I can see if they have that type of button.
Yeah, I, I just wanna get a feel for what kind of crowd we would expect.
Just considering the environment, it's probably gonna lean heavily towards virtual.
And that's fine, but we need to make sure.
Yeah, I, I get it.
That we send the message out the proper, we've, we've, do you plan to attend in person, in person? We, we selected this, this venue, um, with the hopes that more people will show in person. So we can have social distancing will be.
They've taken great care to implement social distancing, there's lots of signage about masks and staying so far apart. I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have an issue going to an event like that, and I'm very careful.
Been to the facility yet? It's nice.
It's very nice.
It's in Waxahaw, right? Just north of Harris Teeter.
Yeah.
Um, in Waxahaw, the Harris Teeter on Main Street.
Sun Kensington.
There's a building there, and you walk in and it's, it's, it's impressive. You'll like it. You'll like my choice.
Sure will.
Missing RSVP.
That would be a great polling places, you know. Get ready, the, the Board of Elections were scrambling for polling places.
Additional ones?
They were having some issues with.
There's also a shortage on poll workers in case anybody wants to volunteer.
Can you, um, will you send this out to everybody? Because I would like to, um. I might like, I'mma, I'mma work on it.
Just, yeah, just send it back to, send it back to me and I'll compile changes.
As I'm, just as I'm like thinking about stuff.
And, and we could probably put out a notice to the planning board because, and, and.
And.
Well, if we have six members of planning board planning to attend, then they have to call a meeting too. Um, it, or you have to notice it with quorum.
Well, that's, that's why, that's why I asked Rohit if he would follow up with planning board and Park, Strick and Greenway and see who's planning on attending.
For that matter, the special meetings. Rohit puts his light on and speeding, puts a space next to it. Is there a space to go there? There you go.
As far as the PRG board goes, I know Bob Nunn and Camp's coming, I don't know if anybody else is, and if anybody else doesn't come, that's not a quorum.
No, I know, but we got John Barisic, he's here, so, so we just, we just need to find out who's planning on coming.
No, this is an announcement, the quorum may take place with these individuals attending.
That's all you have to do.
Yeah, we'll do it anyway. It's quite a potential notice form, no actions being taken.
But I, but I would like to know who's, like, who from those boards is planning on attending in person, cause I'm gonna have them up on the stage with us to answer questions.
The, and the size of, the stage is very large, but they'll, we're probably gonna hustle you on and off stage so that we can keep social distancing even up there.
That's fine. Okay.
If you take too long, we'll pull the hook.
I'm sorry.
What, Bob?
Now, just a comment, I, this is a little bit towards Rohit, was, um, in, in terms of central, the number of topics there. Rohit, if I were to, um, let's say I was just in charge, I was the only person there, and I was to conduct this, you know, this whole, um, town hall meeting. What I would do from a formatting standpoint, looking at the agenda items, is I would use the community survey. Uh, as the, the area of priority of which to discuss all the items that are down at the bottom. So for example, I think, offhand, you, I, the reason addressing is to you, is you knew, you pretty much know the, the survey and how it was formatted. I know Kim does probably as well, but the, the way it started off with, I think the major thing everybody wanted to know about Greenways. So, and, and, you know, the key, you know, preserving the green of Marvin. And I would think that in the checking or discussion, it would be in that line with maybe, uh, Heritage District. Uh, I think that fell, I can't remember, maybe that was number four or something like that, I think on the top five list. So I'm just saying is from a formatting standpoint, maybe address it like that, if anything's there that's good, is just put it in order and reference the survey. In other words, why are we working on these things? Because this is what you asked for, you know, kind of that, we're responding to people, just a thought.
Yeah, I have that, and number five, it says highlights from community survey, and.
Yeah.
And so I, I guess what I'm, what I'm hearing now is to have that community survey be the, basically the first thing we talk about after Gene Stowe. So that it sets the, uh, the background for everything else that we're talking about, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I also think, obviously, from a agenda standpoint, we are, we, we have these whole things, and as we are talking about that, that's the time, and maybe the moderator discusses it. Those are the times that, um, and you guys tell me, do you want questions to be interjected while we're on that topic, or do you wanna save all the questions to the end?
To the end.
So you do like an open Q and A portion?
Okay.
That was actually my next question.
Otherwise, we're just gonna, we're gonna get stuck in it.
You're gonna get stuck in anything, so give us a chance to present.
And we may answer the question at some point.
Do you wanna do a couple smaller question blocks, just cause people probably won't get there at the beginning and come in?
No, just, they can submit them if they have to leave, or if they are not gonna be there on that time, they can submit that question.
That's a good idea, if, like, you don't wanna, like, stand up and ask your question, have like a question box, that you can just pull questions out.
Do you want, uh, all Q and A, all questions and answers directly, directly in the minutes, or just Q and A portion started here, listen to the recording?
Yeah.
Glider?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, not that this makes a difference, but is, um, the, the press, I, might they be there because of the, the, the kind of topics that are here?
I can't guarantee they'll be there, but they will be, they will be notified once the notice goes out.
Okay.
And, and again.
I mean, unless.
Obviously, if then if we're saving them open, uh, the questions are all at the end, and it's, any questions are fair game and stuff. But I think maybe we start with, um, questions from that were already sent in ahead of time.
Yes.
Have an ability, some sort of box with a piece of paper for them to write their questions, and then you, at some point, can present those to us, and those that wanna.
So kinda like they come in the door and just drop, drop a question in a box?
Correct.
If you, if you want, if they, if they're not a good, they don't wanna be up in front speaking publicly, or they wanna be anonymous, asking a question. You have that opportunity, you have the Zoom opportunity to ask, um, so we'll have to have someone manning that.
And then, and then anybody who sent in questions beforehand.
Those are already, those are already ready to go once the, before the meeting starts.
Okay.
So is there a way, and help me out with this as far as technology, so we've got forty people on a Zoom call. And fifteen wanna ask questions, is, how do they communicate?
There's a range of hand chat or something.
Yeah, I don't know if that's on WebEx, but they can definitely put it in chat.
Cause we're gonna, we may, if there's enough people and enough questions, we may have a time issue that, and here's the last question. Um, show of hands or whatever, would you like to see more of these? How often would you like to see this type of event held for the community?
I mean, I hope we get like two hundred and some people there, but I have a feeling it's gonna be like thirty.
And you know what, thirty's good.
Yeah.
Thirty's better than what we've been getting, so.
Thirty's great.
You mean like what came today?
I think we should, um, there should be something on there speaking of, there should be some kind of spot in there on update on promoting Coffee with Council.
Yes.
Because Coffee with Council, I, I'd like to say, well, we've done this now for five months and we've had three visitors.
I think we've had, what, five?
Oh.
I'm talking about five total.
I had to call my last, yesterday, or two days ago, we had a Coffee with Council, and I actually invited, I said, you know what, you're sending me a question, this is a great time for you to come in and ask it. And maybe even join the committee, and that's exactly what you did.
So that was one, and then we had Tim, and then you had three that one day.
And you had two the last time, we, last time, we had one.
Two, so that's seven, so we've got seven.
And then, I don't know about how many you have with Rohit's.
I, I'm sorry. My, my, the cynical side of me.
I was like, we're doing it.
The cynical, the cynical side of me goes, you've had eight hundred people sign up petition, you've had seven, I don't know, do the simple math, and I can figure out what percentage, seven is of eight hundred.
Less than one percent.
Yeah. That's eight hundred disgruntled, oh my god, the village is on fire. I'm, I mean, what the hell? I'm sorry.
I mean.
I like it, I like it. The village is on fire.
You, you, we do it, we do it in the, we set it up where we do it in the morning, and we do it, we set it up in the evening, seven?
Come in and find out what's going on.
We make sure we thank those seven for coming.
Yes, thank you to those.
Otherwise, that hour is pretty, you know, not that I don't like sitting there chatting with you for an hour, but there's other things we.
I do. I mean, I don't, I mean, I don't.
I, I just, again, I just feel like sometimes we're, we're, we're dealing with kindergarten.
No, and I think we put it off there with, we're promoting it, we're doing a town hall, we're gonna do more of these.
There, there is no reason for you not to be informed, and, and, you know. Well, it should be just a. Choosing the wrong. I don't know how it's a topic, but it just, it just says, we'd like to, hopefully, that, hopefully each one of you that are on the call, that are here, and as you share with your friends. That this council has made it a priority to be transparent, to be open for anything. We've invited ourselves to every HOA, come up with an HOA meeting. We have Coffee with Council twice a month. We have, we have, you have communications coming out from staff that, that we, we put together to send out every single month. Hopefully you'll see. Forget, forget even HOAs, you got four or five people that wanna talk to a couple council people, as long as it's not three of us. Well, I think we'd be open to that, and this is what.
It's like, awesome council, yeah.
We're, it's what we're trying to incorporate, but the, uh.
Hundred percent. Okay, so are we good with this for right now?
Yeah, I think I've got everything somewhere ten, fifteen.
So, so send it out to us, cause I, cause I'll end up moving stuff around and trying to rearranging, so if you, if you continue to rearrange and move stuff around, just keep sending it out. And then, and then let's make sure that this is on the agenda for the eighth.
Okay.
To talk about.
We're already going into eight-thirties, it's going to nine o'clock?
Uh, ten o'clock.
I gotta find more room, okay.
Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's see, so we're putting this agenda up for debate on the.
Eighth, just up, up for conversation, and then we'll dry run it on the eleventh, so we need to call, we need to call a special meeting for the eleventh. Yeah, you need.
Yeah, that would give us a couple days to make.
File changes.
Do changes that require some time. That will give us a couple days to do that.
So, Austin, special meeting notice for the eleventh?
I got it, it's already in the notes.
And is there any place on there that we can just give general, um, scheduled stuff, where, what our schedules are, Coffee with Council, National Night Out.
Yep. We'll do, we'll do, we'll tie like a spot on there with an update for remaining, um, uh, events for the rest of the year.
Yep.
Okay. Just do events rest of the year, and we'll know what we're talking about. Okay. Good job.
I wanna put virtual events rest of the.
Yeah, I, I can't believe they haven't canceled.
I'll promote a, uh, after hour, ten o'clock thing.
Isn't that your call?
Beers with Bob.
Yeah, Beers at Bob's House on here.
Beers, Beers at Bob's House.
Wouldn't canceling National Night be your call, be your, your call?
Huh?
Wouldn't canceling that event be your call?
Nah, because if it's National Night Out, it's national.
You're pushing for barbecuing with Bob, I'm gonna go Beers with Bob.
Ooh, barbecue with Bob.
Well, this would be late night, ten o'clock. Beers and barbecue with Bob.
There we go. All right. Oh, informational, okay, we're ready?
That's what this is for.
All right, we're ready for the next one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Number twenty-six, Joe.
All right, next we have informational only, National Night Out reminder.
Just literally just there to remind y'all this is coming up, and you need to prepare for it.
All right.
And any discussion for this?
And we just need to show up, we're not really asked to do any, anything other than that, right?
No, and Park, Strick and Greenway are supposed to be.
They're spearheading, yeah.
The deputies, but I don't know how that, I wasn't the last.
I have it on my schedule, we're good?
Yeah.
Any comments?
Nope.
All right, next up, we have, um, update of website.
Austin, that's you, sorry.
You're fine, you're fine. Uh, this is, we're gonna be really brief, uh, basically our.
I wanted to know where we were.
Yeah, uh, in our last website committee meeting, Jared with, uh, Granite Sky, he walked us through a wire schematic for the website, which is basically. General shapes of where things are gonna be, there's no color, no detail, just general structure of how everything's gonna look, and it's coming along great. It'll have lots of really cool features, really intuitive, no, um, no, uh, gosh, I forgot the word. No redund, no redundant pages, but redundant links to pages, so people can easily find things. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for next Thursday. As far as I know, he is, he's planned, he plans to have a full design ready to go to show us. I don't know if it's gonna be functioning or not at that point, if it's just gonna be a demo.
Can we have a big poster blown up of the main page of what the new, for the town hall?
I don't know, I can check, I can check into it, the only thing is, at our, at our next meeting, uh, the committee will recommend, will go through and recommend changes, and I don't know how long that'll take to record.
Maybe just the main homepage, and just, again, it doesn't have to function, but if we can get like a big poster and be like, hey, guys, it's coming, it's, we're working on it.
And we can notify them of the dot gov too, cause that'll, that'll begin as, it's already active, you type dot gov, it'll take you to our main website currently, but. The, it'll be formerly MarvinNC.gov, once the website launches.
Right, I love that.
Late October launch is what I'm thinking, but I'll have to talk with Jared.
Okay, good. But then this way, we can just be like, it's coming, we're working on it, look how awesome it looks, it's so pretty, it's gonna be easy, you know. You know, lots of easels and picture and lots.
What time does National Night Out start?
These are six-thirty.
Six-thirty.
Six, six-thirty.
We're talking about making it start, our event start a little bit earlier because it gets darker. Yeah, it gets darker earlier.
All right.
Is that all we have?
That's all I have.
Perfect.
All right, next up, we have, uh, update land use.
Where are we, Rohit?
The, uh, planning board is, uh, getting ready to give, uh, me their last comments, and, uh, to give the final, uh, recommendation to council at their next meeting. Which, uh, was on the fifteenth, but they rescheduled it to the sixteenth.
Oh, so we won't have it?
Yeah, so you won't have the final version, but they do have a final draft.
Okay, so that's what we're gonna put on the, on the website, and, okay, perfect.
And, yeah, so that's, again, we'll have the public comments.
Yeah, and the difference between the final draft and the final version are very minor things.
Okay, so you'll give that to us at the work session in September?
Yes.
Okay, so we can, that our homework will do, and then me to have it for the work session. Okay, so we can, that our homework will do, then we need to have it for the work session?
In October, right?
Yes.
For adoption in the November regular session.
Perfect, okay, good. That's, that's kind of, that's, I wanted a timeline, that's what we're looking at. Okay.
Yep. That good with everyone?
Yeah, thank you for that update.
Next up we have WUMA update.
WUMA!
WUMA. So I was, I am the delegate for Marvin that we formed. WUMA stands for Western Union Municipal Alliance. We had our first meeting a week or so ago. And we designated the chair, which is Jeff Perryman. He's the, he's a councilman at Weddington. And the co-chair is Amanda Fuller, who's the mayor pro tem at Wesley Chapel. And again, the real reason for this meeting is we're gonna hold monthly meetings. It's basically to address the extraterrestrial.
Extraterritorial.
Territorial. Didn't you say?
He made, she made the joke last.
Extraterritorial jurisdiction.
See, I'd say joking.
ETJ.
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 Oh my goodness.
So it was very good. I think we had. Yeah, we had, what?
Did you get a drink drink?
I got a tea. We had good participation. Everybody showed up there. We will have monthly, and the idea behind this, and again, Weddington hosted the first, they're hosting the second one, which will be on September twenty-fourth. It is really the, I think we chose the fourth Thursday of every month.
That's our, what was it, at night?
It's at three-thirty to five, so hopefully we can be done by three-thirty at these meetings. We agreed to that, but here's the other issue, the bogey that's played. So the only thing that most likely will happen as this transitions from town to town is we're gonna be hosting it once here, then maybe Wesley Chapel, then possibly Mineral Springs and basically. The, they voted to have the clerks from that town be responsible when they host it to do the minutes for that meeting.
There you go, Austin.
Oh, fine.
It's not anything real intense and stuff, but as long as you're there, it's three-thirty to five on the fourth Thursday of every month, so that's, we're scheduled that.
Fourth Thursday of every month?
The fourth Thursday of every month. Right now, all we've scheduled so far.
Because.
Yeah, we've only scheduled out. We've only scheduled out for the next month, so we only have the schedule till September. At that meeting, we'll look at schedules going further.
Just keep me posted.
Hosting. So we'll keep you posted on that. They encourage us all to have our planners there, cause they're a very important part of that process. Three-thirty to five.
We're getting roped in everything.
Yeah, so. But it's, it's, if you can attend with me at another place, great. If not, maybe Andy comes with me. But we only have one voting, right? But we do have a mission statement too. It's basically, the mission of the Western Union Municipal Alliance is to promote cooperation and communication between members of the alliance to advocate for our mutual interest and goals with state and county officials, and to educate and inform our residents regarding current issues facing our region. So one of the.
You're not telling me who's in it?
Wesley Chapel, Weddington, Mineral Springs, Marvin and Stallings.
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 Depending on how you pronounce it. So the key is, one of the key things that Rohit and I, when we were at the Union County Thirty Year Plan, we kinda looked at each other and it, and it was brought up at this meeting. One of the county commissioners suggested, as they were suggesting to give us a loud and be able to have input, one of the commissioners says, well, what's in it for us? And if you think about that, we, you and I look at each other, it's like, this is not supposed to be anything. It's, it's about the community. And this whole idea of, we talked about, especially if it's in the donut hole, we should have some sort of representation. So we believe there's more power in numbers by coming together as a community, that's an official group that goes to the county commissioners, how we get our word across, or will they accept that and deal with that? But we have the, the power of the vote too. We can encourage our citizens, you know, you know, just educate them on what's happening at the county level. And the biggest issue is all this, you know, what we learned there was a big issue is infrastructure, specifically broadband, I believe it was, but also roads, obviously. But what they're willing to do and what we're not willing to do. So Wesley Chapel faces the same issues Weddington does, but they wanna put, when they can, especially in the donut holes, things that we don't necessarily want, that just really pushes up the traffic, the issues and reasons why we bought here. So it's a good committee. We met, good stuff going on, formed a mission statement, have a thing. And I'd like to do a blurb to our community when it comes out that, hey, we're now part of this alliance, that we're trying to look out for them and we wanna voice at the county commissioners' table.
That's amazing. Great job, Joe.
And I can make it to the meeting.
Yeah, and I thought, the Thursday I didn't think was gonna be an issue and I certainly didn't think it would be, I mean, every town agreed to provide their own, and it's only for that meeting you're doing that.
I think that maybe that's, Austin can handle it.
Wednesday was it again?
It's the last Thursday.
Fourth Thursday of, fourth Thursday of every month, is what the initial plan is. And it's three-thirty to five, so it's during work hours and everyone seemed to be able to make that.
Yeah, so that means we just need to make sure these.
But we'll give you, has a plenty of time, so this Wednesday, so the next, in September, we'll know when the next meeting is.
Did you say you wanted, did you say anything about a blurb on this?
I would like to put a blurb out, one of my blurb comments if we get to that point about what we're talking about.
That's next up.
When we get to our blurb comments, that is definitely one, just some mention of why we formed this group and, you know.
I'm proud of you, Jeff, for coming up with a board of many, but.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose of the, our municipalities are positioned, what we'd like to see happen with county commissioners, addressing the donut holes, border town issues relevant to the towns. And it, and the whole idea is, it should be less work for commissioners. If you think about it, it doesn't go to them, it comes to our town.
Right.
We have a say in it and especially.
That is what they get out of it.
Yeah, yeah, that, that would be what they get out of it.
In uncontiguous areas.
Yeah, and they're not the bad guy on this and stuff.
And if you have any specific verbiage you wanna go out, you know, send it to me, I'll, I'll take it up.
I would say initially maybe contact the clerk or the administrator at Weddington and see what, I think we're all trying to put out something.
Talk to Lisa.
Whether they have, yeah, and say, is there something that they can put out? But just basically the announcement that Marvin has, is, is now part of WUMA, which is Western Union Municipal Alliance. The idea is to get, you know, have a voice to their power numbers, a voice at the table, that type of thing. I don't know specifically what to say. If you had me saying it, it'd be two pages long, obviously, Kim would think. But just a blurb announcing that we've, are part of this.
Two pages, two sentences.
There you go. Let's get it down to the two pages.
So you're probably.
We're excited to announce.
Yeah, I know, I know. Marvin is a partner in the.
Western Union Municipal Alliance with blah, 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 blah.
They plan to meet the fourth Tuesday of every month.
They don't, you don't, they don't, they don't.
Yeah, no, they don't need to.
Their goal, their goal is.
Oh, it is public?
It is a public meeting, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but they don't need to know what it is.
Well, if it's public, then.
It's a public meeting. They wanna attend and have say of what the hell's going on in areas that we can't control. Then go talk to your county commissioners. My recommendation was, if it involves our town, especially if it's in our donut hole, that somehow we ask them to give us a vote.
Whenever.
And what I mean by that is there's five commissioners, there's five towns. We have ten votes on that town. So whether you get the votes or not, but it wouldn't be, like CRTPO, the majority, if you've ever been to them, the majority vote is Charlotte, right? So you really can't get past what you want unless you have all your towns, including someone from Charlotte, voting for you. In this situation, and I don't know how they do it with their bylaws, you have five county commissioners and you have five representatives from the towns. Maybe all the towns agree that this shouldn't happen. There's five voices, they can't get the majority in that, in that case. But it, it's a way to say, hey, we tried to put it through. I, I just don't know. I propose that. Whether they can do that bylaws, while it's invite us in when it relates to ETJs. I would love to see that happening because it would, it would mean that we would have to back our neighboring communities. When it's time they have an issue with this, we all talk and just say.
Two questions. So in, in the, in these meetings, whenever you're voting on an, on an issue, I would assume when the issue falls specifically just within Marvin, it's just Marvin, people voting on this?
It's, it's.
Or the entire.
It's, we're having these two people speak on behalf of WUMA.
Okay.
The chair and the, so any issues that we have, like we have an issue coming up, we would want to present it to the chair. And then what they do is, everything kind of is a chain of command type thing. And then they present it to the county commissioners to speak on behalf, as a group, for Marvin, for Weddington on this issue, for Mineral Springs on this issue. And then you're saying, look, you've got all these communities agreeing that we're against what you're doing. Whether it's deannexation or whatever, we're gonna have a voice.
The last question is, whenever, whenever a meeting is held here, do we need to be in a larger venue for the, cause we're gonna have a lot more people in this room?
There wasn't many more people than what we have here right now.
Okay.
There was.
Cause only five people, five municipalities.
Five municipalities, no one else stepped up then you had.
It's just hard to implement such a.
The administrator and the clerk was there from Weddington. The five things, and then there was one additional guy from Wesley Chapel.
So, I don't know that.
So there was like eight people there. They could get more, cause it's a public meeting now.
We might need, I was saying, we might need to move a meeting to the church if there were a lot of stuff.
Okay.
I mean, just plan ahead.
We'll figure it out when, when they come to that. Okay.
All right, that's all I have. Next up, communication topics.
No open topics?
What?
No open topics?
Nope.
No. Um, no open topics, sorry. Communication topics, email blurbs.
Before you, before you all start on your lists, quick update on communications. It's gone very well this past month. Like I said, Gene Stowe had the most successful posting, social media and email, email wise, probably in the village's history.
Did you all get his card?
Yep.
Uh, I'm looking into more ways to expand our reach. Probably the next few months, I'm gonna look into some other social platforms, depending on what we can actually create enough content for. I'm getting it with Bob Nunninkamp. Probably next week, we're talking about doing a monthly March newsletter.
Correct.
The, the kind of focusing on wildlife and I think that's something we don't really talk about much in our other communications.
Right.
Um, but any preferences that you all have on that or any other things to go out?
I mean, I, I don't use social media, so. Insta.
Didn't we mention this topic in Twitter?
I'm thinking, I was, I'm gonna talk about Twitter in a future meeting. As far as Instagram goes, we don't have enough picture content to really make that successful, I think.
So maybe Twitter?
Twitter would be good down, good down the line. No Snapchat though, you can't archive that.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, okay, so the stuff that, in the sevens. I saw we did that, we did that. Roundabout alternatives, did that go out?
Yes.
I saw that, I saw the Andy welcome. Did the Kent Renner and Ron Patel go out?
It did. It's, it's, you know, that, certain things are individual, email, certain things are in the newsletters and that was, that was when it's in the newsletter.
Nice newsletter, last one.
We've got a good posting.
We've got some compliments from Mr. Renner. Who else?
I saw Tommy's went out, that was, that went out early?
That went out.
That went out this week.
What was that?
I was gonna say, the newsletters they got on Friday and then all the components of the newsletters hit social media the following week on different days. We've got a good pattern going.
We need a Labor Day. We don't have a Labor Day.
Okay.
What else you got, Joe?
Oh, I just, number one, doing a shout out to our upcoming to Forest Hill Church. Providing the venue at, at minimum, or a discounted rate to, because of our community.
How about just say, thanks for hosting? What else you got, Joe?
Uh, the WUMA.
What else you got, Joe?
I'm happy right now.
Joe's happy. That's a good one. Uh, we need to welcome our, we need to have a, welcome to Dan.
Yeah.
For PR and G, and we need to have a.
And the Village Center Committee, new board members.
Reforming, the members of the new committee, list their names.
Bob, what you got? What you got, Bob?
Can we do that one after we have all?
Yeah, we can hold on.
I'm just impressed about how organized this is of everything I'm looking at. Is there anything about school by chance? With, with Union County schools, is there?
What specifically?
You're on your own.
Good luck.
Be aware of buses.
Huh?
Be aware of the school.
Yeah, I have a general safety reminder that goes out in some of these newsletters, kind of filler topic, just saying that kids are going back, watch out, drive safely, buses, so and so.
Watch your speed.
What else you got, Bob?
I'm coming up empty.
What you got, Jamie?
Listen to her.
What you got, Jamie?
She's running the show. Cause she's got, she's got a list over there.
She's got a whole list.
She's gonna represent her, working on this. She's gonna make you feel bad.
She tapped, she tapped the community. She has no ideas. It's all.
What you got, Jamie?
I still, you know, we always put the reminders out for Coffee with Council. The only other thing I could think of is the, and we don't have an update, so it's nothing but about the tree.
Okay, yeah.
On Marvin Road.
I can, if, do you mean to wait till we have more information on it before something goes out?
Yeah, I did.
I can just put a general one saying that tree's gonna be removed at some point at NCDOT's.
Yeah.
Update coming later. Because there have been people that.
How about this?
Yeah, I'll figure it out. Or funding.
How about a reminder to encourage people to vote and to get.
You wanna link to absentee ballots?
Absentee ballots, cause you gotta do that way ahead of time. And encourage people to vote and start vetting their, the candidates now.
We.
I always get questions, who do I vote for?
And that's not, and, 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 oh yeah, can we put like, who is running like locally?
I think you can establish.
Or like a link?
I could, I.
Sample ballot.
Yeah, we can do it, we can do a sample ballot.
That's a great idea.
One thing, I've been in, I've been in contact with the Union County Board of Elections. At some point, they are supposed to bring voter registration forms by here to go in the office. I'm thinking they might bring some absentee request forms in here too, at least we could have those on site.
Well, if they're able to get a registration form here, normally you get that, you can register like DMV. But if they can come here to get a form to mail that in.
Cause that should be a blurb.
That should be a blurb.
Yeah, then that's, we can include that.
Cause voting's coming up.
But we don't have the forms yet.
Yeah, but everything's happening. I mean, it's like, there's a mad rush. I can't tell you how many emails or phone calls and that. I don't know who to vote for and stuff. And there's information out there. And it's, if nothing else, absentee, you gotta plan ahead, gotta vote ahead, think about where you're gonna be if you're gonna be traveling and, you know.
We can do an individual email that's just a voting one. That can go out a couple times, just so that people have their, all their voting information in one place.
That's a good idea.
But here's the sample ballot, what's coming up and.
Good job, Joe.
Yeah, so see, see?
One additional blurb is, Joe asked me about the note, about my notary certification. That should be happening. That should be happening in a few weeks. Christina has to sign off on the check that has to go to the state. So that won't go until next week or whenever she's back.
I'll write it. Just let me know what's.
You can sign it.
Can he sign it?
Can you sign it? Can you sign checks?
I can't anymore.
Okay.
They got me off the check signing list.
But once, once I get it mailed to the state, I should hear back within two weeks. I go to Monroe and then I'm good to go once I get all my supplies. So I'm expecting into September, but it may just be, need to be an October topic.
Congrats ahead of time.
Yeah, that's good. Okay, anything else?
What do you got, Kim?
What's that? I have Labor Day.
That's it? Wow.
You beat Kim this week. How's it feel?
The pressure she put on us. We performed, guys. Thank you.
Uh-uh, Jamie didn't. Bob didn't. You're the only one that wrote something to the table.
They fed him to me via, you know, email.
The social security checks come out.
What?
What? What did you say?
Oh.
Uh, forget it.
Okay.
All right, next up we have administrators report.
Christina. She's gone again.
There she comes.
I'm here. So we did hear back from DNT and they are not going to move the roundabout up on the list just contingent upon us accepting that road. So that's an affirmative. And then they also let us know that it does not, our acceptance or no acceptance does not change the scheduling or the or the, um, the roundabout being implemented at, at their calls and the agreement that we've already agreed upon. Because they still have a part of ownership in that, um, that other road. So Marvin Road would still be under their ownership and their per view. They would still want to control, traffic control in that area, so, so it wouldn't be affected by that.
So, if they can't move that up, what else? And I just learned and I didn't realize that they want us to continue the, the road maintenance all the way down to the state line, why is that?
They want to.
That's what they want? We don't have to agree to that, right?
We don't have to, because then they won't let us take it.
Yeah, they're not interested in just getting rid of like sections of roads. They, they don't wanna, you know, they don't want to take this, this, this little stretch. They wanna get rid of Marvin Road.
Yeah, I mean, I, I want a lot of things too, but that's, I mean, we're. I, I don't know, there's gotta be negotiating room, because at the end of the day, we don't have to take over roundabout to roundabout. And that's, you know what, that takes it off their list. But having them saying, no, you have to take it all the way down to the border. I, I got issues with that, because that's another 0.7 miles or whatever it is.
I know, I'm fine with it. If it gives us this out here.
It's another 200 grand a year in budget worries.
If it gets not.
That gets traveled by 16,000 cars that the majority of them are not Marvin.
This hasn't been paid one time since I've been out.
I understand.
We're not have to do it one time in 25 years.
Before we turn it over to, they turn it over to us, I'm gonna say, you need to get it up to your own. Uh, it's just. Well, here's the deal, why would we take over a lemon?
So that, so that we can control the speed.
Right.
Right.
But we take that over, but were you gonna take it over in the condition it is?
I'm not saying we are.
That's my point, so.
I'm just saying that they're not.
The agreement with, correct me if I'm wrong, before we take over a community or a neighborhood, we have to, they bring it up to their own standards, then we take it over. This road, before we take it over, should be brought up to North Carolina State standards before we take. Why would we take over something that requires money right away?
Christina, find that out for us.
Do you want me to find out if the current road is up to their standard?
Yes, and if not, will they pay for it to get it up before we take it over? No, I don't know.
I tell you, right now, that turn on Nor, right, right now, that, that, they're not taking care of that.
I know, but that's like, that's like.
A small pond.
I know, but that's still what they're gonna be there, because that's their leg, so we don't have to worry about that.
My whole point is, is just because they say it doesn't mean, and you know, at the end of the day, we can just go like this and say, you know, we're gonna not take it over.
But we wanna take it.
We do, that's the intent, we do, there's no question we do. But there has to be, it's like, then tell us, why are you gonna take this, you gotta take it all. And I, wait a minute, we're not in the state, we're not in the road business. We're slowly getting into it just for our community. But you tell me that 16,000 cars that are, our majority of is Marvin?
We talked, we talked about this like two meetings ago, we were all okay with it.
Not the extension, dude.
Yes.
I was not aware of the extension, it goes all the way down to South Carolina.
I was, and I was fine with it.
Well.
If it gives us this up.
I'd like to revisit that then, and then I'd also like to revisit before we take this over. And again, before we take this over, it has to be at least to North Carolina standards, where our AMT can go out and inspect it and make sure. Why would we take over a car? You're just like buying a car and the first thing you do is putting it in the shop to get fixed. You know, why would we do that?
Buy now, I don't know, maybe they add up to standards.
Depending on what, maybe it is, and that's great, if it is, then we'll, we can take it over, but, I mean, it's just.
If it is or if they will accept, you know, accept the responsibility of bringing it up to those standards before we take it over, which I highly assume that they would, um, what do you want? Do you, are you guys interested in us moving forward with it?
Yes, I am.
Less the extension down to South Carolina.
I'm all in for the whole thing, let's take over all Newtown Road to Monroe.
Does it go that far?
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 where's it at?
It does, it goes to Monroe.
I mean, why would they say, keep going on all the way out to, to Providence Road?
Because that's where we, that's where we.
That's, that's my whole point.
Goes into Monroe.
And it's, it, listen, they, they, they are, they are savvy enough, it's not even them doing it anymore. Where road crews can just pick up and drop in and put in one, seven tenths of a mile and fix their road if that's on their bucket list of things to get fixed. They're not gonna fix it anyways, I'm just saying, the only thing we lose is the control of speed over there.
Yes, Christina, I'm all for it, the whole thing.
Okay, we'll get some answers.
Hold on, let's see what Jamie and Bob say.
I, I just think it's absurd to think that the state's gonna bring it up to their level, because they, right now, they're, they're.
Broke.
They're stymied on that, um.
But that's the agreement for the, for, for neighborhoods. You know, before they, before we get the road over, they have to get there.
But I, I, I thought the, the original, um, mark was from roundabout to pop, proposed roundabout.
That's what I said.
The extension part, I'm, I'm okay with taking that on, but only if the state brings it up to state level, which is not gonna happen, so it's almost like we're, it's checkmate, you know, it's just, we're at a check. You know, we're not going anywhere with it, we're not going anywhere with this conversation. It's a, it's a moot point, as much as I would love to have that part. Because once they get past the, you know, got on, get onto the extension, they can go as fast as they want. We're trying to just eliminate people just racing up and down through here. But I just don't think we're gonna, we're ever gonna be able to connect the, to connect the dots with the state on that.
What do you think, Bob?
I'm gonna make my decision based off of the fact that when I'm sitting down on the planning board, um, there's discussion, there is discussion, and Rohit can back me up on this, that.
I have the email.
We're at extend, we're looking at extending past the roundabout, uh, going into Philbrecht's property, going on the corner. Um, and my thought is it would, you know, it was, the original idea going from roundabout to roundabout was good. Um, you'd never know what's gonna happen in the future, uh, the discussions that I hear. Uh, that turn could have possibly, you know, member, member CP and I was talking about maybe putting density housing of a senior citizen living around that corner. Uh, so I'm, I'm basically gonna say, you never know what's gonna happen. I, I think we ought to just do as Kim's recommending and take on, because I think it may creep beyond that one day and, and we're gonna be, what we're trying to do in the Litch District, that'll be on outside anyways.
So, so just for the record, you guys are willing regardless, and this is what I'm getting at, regardless, you're willing to take this over as is without any improvements from North, because the state is basically gonna, I'm telling you, the state won't be, they couldn't write that agreement quick enough as soon as we say we're willing to take it over as is.
We need to ask.
Not ask, demand, just like we do our.
We need to demand, but if they say no.
It goes back to before, John, I'm agreeing with you.
Right.
I would never take it over until they brought up the standards, but we're assuming that they're gonna consider that and the answer's already no, we can ask it, Christina. Pete, please ask them if they would be open to bring it up to standard and then, then we can discuss whether to take on the extension or that last leg. But I don't think it's just, I just don't think it's gonna happen.
Then my, my thing is, why, why even take it over until we can get to, to, maybe they, maybe in three years, four years or something, they get to a point where they're able to fund it and they can come in. Because right now, they're likely to say no, because they have no funding.
Well, then they may not let us take it over.
But that's always on the table for them. They want, trust me, they want to get as rid of many, as many rows as they can to get it off their dock.
Okay, well, let's see, Christina, find out some more info for us, please.
Okay, and, and the next item is, is annexation to get to that point, but I guess it's, that, that, Rohit, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but that conversation's probably the moot point this time until we figure out if we're gonna move forward or not.
Uh, yeah, that's right.
Okay, thanks Christina, glad you woke up from your nap.
She's so nice. Um, next up, agenda item, we have review action items and ongoing action items.
Uh, well, you skipped.
Oh, planners report, Rohit, I was trying to.
Did Christina finish the annexation?
Yeah.
It's a big point for.
Yeah, we're skipping that for now. Um, so I actually don't have a planners report, because a lot of the things that I meant to talk about were on the agenda. Um, but I'm open to any questions about general topics.
No, we're good, I mean, we've topic them down. Let's move on.
That makes it, I mean, our plan was good.
Yeah.
I have, no, I'm just.
Not that we don't wanna hear from you or any of that, but.
Sure, thank you, Rohit. Okay, next up, see, I told you, we're at agenda items, uh, review of action items and ongoing action items spreadsheet.
I'm good with this list right now, I didn't have any updates.
It's fine, uh, okay, for today, this is gonna take a minute.
Oh, for this, for this one, I'm good. Usually I have issues, but I'm good.
We've been going through it and taking things we've done all, okay. Uh, so, okay, so I will place traffic policy on September work session. Christina will revise the traffic calming policy. Derek will get with PRG on plants for the roundabout landscaping. Christina will purchase the, the light our gun. I will draft the verbiage for the plaques and proclamations for Don Carr and Nick Dispensier. Um, Christina will consult with Chaplin on the charter change communications. Y'all are really going through that candy. I, I will place a defense policy on the September 8th agenda. Rohit will ensure completion of the annexation package by September 8th. I will place that package on the September 8th agenda and it's already on the, the agenda for the special call meeting on the 15th. Um, I will, let's see, draft the, the special meeting notice for September 11th at 10 a.m. for the dry run of the town hall meeting. Uh, between me and Christina, we will revise the funding policy. I will place a discussion of the Strategic Plan Committee with Emma Lane on September 8th. Uh, Rohit will pursue the federal grant as far as, uh, funding for greenways. I will send out blurbs to appeal to younger residents to volunteer for boards. I will figure out a drop box for questions at the town hall meeting. I will place the minutes on the consent, the minutes approved today on the consent agenda. I will send a congratulatory letter to Dan Wilson for his appointment. Rohit will follow it with Gene Stowe for the town hall meeting. Uh, between me and Rohit, we'll get the land use plan draft on the website. I'll send out my blurbs, uh, Rohit will follow up with boards on town hall attendance. Got a few more. Let's see, I will place the town hall meeting agenda on the September 8th agenda. Uh, me and Rohit will make sure that we get a blown up homepage of the new website for the town hall. And Christina will research, uh, Newtown road maintenance and if NC DOT will repair prior to us assuming ownership. Did I miss anything?
I don't think so.
How was that, Christina?
That was great.
Good. What'd you say?
Okay, I don't know what she said, she cut out there. All right, uh, next up, we have council comments. Bob, you're farthest away from me right now.
I'm, I'm good, far, I'll start off by saying, first off, I, I'm really impressed with us. Uh, in December, we spoke about the need for communication and, you know, transparency and getting the word out about who we are and what we're trying to do. Uh, I am really impressed with the fact that how we're doing this. Um, uh, you know, Austin, I gotta tell you, you're adding another layer to, I mean, your sophistication about social media and knowing how to communicate the right way. Um, and as well as with everybody else there, that, you know, Christina and Rohit, you're, you're putting in your input, but Austin, you've taken control of this thing and I, I get communication all the time from people going, I think I said this the last time, they're saying to me, oh my gosh, stunk, you know, like this information is coming out. The thing that I love is that when that logo shows up, it's our logo. And when you have other information that's coming out in the form of, um, Victoria's Secret colors, well, the Pink Panther.
Wait, what happened?
You lost, you, wait, you lost Victoria's.
I'm waiting up there. But when you see other colors of other emails, you know right away. And, and, uh, I just love the fact that we're out there with our colors, you see what we're doing. Um, and I'm just really impressed with us, how we've gotten that communication out to this level. I mean, even now, the in-person stuff, I mean, we're talking about town halls, coffee with councils and I'm going, wow, I don't remember any involvement. And that newsletter that went out was another thing and, you know, there, there's another reminder that we're out there, here's information. So, if anybody thinks that we're trying to do something under the COVID darkness, uh, you know, we're not, so I'm, I'm just proud of it.
Thank you, Bob.
I'm good.
You're good?
Nope.
Jamie?
Um, we, I, we always take our points in, in the council comments to thank staff for what you do. And we mean it and we appreciate all the hard work that you've put into it. I think the survey that came back from COG, um, that highlighted how understaffed we are, um, puts an explanation point on how much we appreciate staff for the work that you do. So, thanks to staff, we accomplished, we have, I, I believe, this is not, this is my first time doing this, but I believe we've accomplished a heck of a lot over the, over, since the first of the year. And that's a lot of work that we've done collectively, but staff has implemented, put the heart, you know, um, you know, the, the fingers to the grindstone on it. And, but the, the COG report, the survey and their recommendations highlight how just important you are to the success of everything that's been done. And, um, so, big thanks to staff for what you do.
Thank you.
Jamie, um, first up, very productive meeting, um, you know, they're, they're long, but they're, they're productive. That's all that matters, is that they are productive, but I'd like to shorten, but, um, also like to thank staff. Also like to thank staff, particularly, um, both Rohit and Austin, Rohit staying late for the coffee with council and, um, um, having your input there is always helpful for constituents that do show up. Austin, for getting the minutes almost completed and that, that task and getting that done. And, and also, if you guys don't know, the shirts are in, um, so if you haven't got your shirts.
I got.
How do you like it, Kim?
Very cool, very cool, my, my kids are already looking at it.
I haven't got mine.
Okay, okay.
I gave you yours.
Kids are already, kids are already looking at which ones they're gonna be wearing, especially when it gets cold. Um, welcome back to students, uh, to school and to their new norm, if you will. Um, like the welcome, been back since we haven't met since then. Uh, congrats to the appointed members of the newly formed Strategic Planning Committee, looking forward to working with those individuals. And I would encourage you all, um, anytime you get a phone call, an email from a constituent, that is a great opportunity to dive in, maybe on another subject about getting them involved. And for me, it was a simple thing, someone asked me about the, what's going on and I said, you know, there's coffee with council, she ends up showing up to it and she's on our committee. So, uh, um, thank you, Dorada, for, uh, stepping up and being willing to volunteer. And I hope we do get some volunteers of the younger generation too, that may be earlier home. So, with that, I would like to, uh, move into a closed session before we adjourn.
Okay, so I make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to NCGS 143-318.11A3 to consult with an attorney employed or obtained by the public body in order to protect attorney-client privilege and NCGS 143-318.11A6 to discuss personnel.
And is Chaplin available? Christina?
So, how about you finish the motion and then we'll do that.
I'm gonna make sure we're not done, I have to go into recess before we, until we get in. Um, further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so Bob and Christina.
And a motion.
Okay.
And a motion for.